Glorious Independence and welcome to the 7/7/2020 Regular Scheduled Board of Supervisors Meeting. And because we don't do anything twice the same this year, we want to welcome everybody in the audience and we thank you for masking up. We know that there are several people on Zoom as well as calling in. So before we start, I would like to ask if Supervisor Finley is joining us? Supervisor Finley, if you could chat or acknowledge. Is that him?
This is Texas. He's driving right now.
He's driving. Okay, so we'll go ahead and proceed. Would you all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please proceed. So just as a reminder, we will take our COVID team presentation first and we thank you. I know the last time we met, we thought we were going to be able to put a pause on it, but there's been many changes, so welcome and please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning Supervisor Morris, Chief of Public Health Nursing Director. Our testing and contact tracing numbers are as follows. To date, 896 negatives, two positives that have resolved. There were two total isolations for those two positives. We have one currently in quarantine and 19 total quarantined individuals since April.
Marcy, excuse me, can you hold on one second? Supervisor Morris is having a technical problem. I'm getting feedback and bear with me. When you speak, it comes over to the speaker, so we are not hearing you in no time. Hold it, one second. Okay, I got it. Okay, so go ahead and start over at the 896, Marcy.
Okay, thank you. 896 negatives, two positives that have resolved. Two individuals that were in isolation have resolved. We have currently one individual in quarantine and 19 total quarantined individuals since April. We have 60 pending tests. We have changed the statistics on our website to reflect numbers in quarantine as well as isolation. This is due in part to, we're starting to see, although we don't have positive cases, we're seeing contact tracing requirements for people who have been exposed outside Trinity County. So the cases belong to the county that they were exposed in, but they come back to Trinity County and we therefore need to do contact tracing and quarantine those individuals. We've also placed on the website a link below the data table that takes you to the alert levels for Trinity County based on the metrics that the state has identified as those requiring toggling back, depending on what those numbers are. As you're well aware, roughly 22 counties in California have had to close high-risk sectors because of the astronomical numbers of cases that are continuing. To date, in California, there have been 93,630 new cases over 14 days. Hospitalizations are going up and ICU bed surge is going up. With that said though, we rely on regional hospitals. We don't have an ICU in our hospital and we don't, we have a limited number of beds. But I have to tell you, I'm so very proud of our hospital, Belen and Erin. They're doing a phenomenal job of testing persons in the hospital, testing those nursing facility clients and their staff and jumping into serology testing. I'm really, really proud and honored to be a part of their team. And I really wanted to say that because I don't think they get enough credit sometimes for what they do. We are at level, if you go to the alert table on our website, you'll see that the hospital care system box is at a yellow alert, whereas all the other alerts are green as far as cases of COVID and disease control. The reason for that is our region is at an 18% ICU surge right now, so that warranted us to move that up to a yellow alert. And that appendix to our containment plan is also on the website and members of the public and you can all link on that and see what those metrics are and what percentages those thresholds are. One of the key threshold indicators for the state is not only those numbers increasing and those thresholds met, but they have to be sustained for about three days. And then once you're on that list, it's 14 days before you can reopen those sectors unless you have consistent decreasing numbers or stabilized numbers. We are, regarding testing, we're adding, we continue the mobile testing drive-through every week. These testing sites will be, will continue into August, well into August. So at first it was just a month and now it's at least until mid-August and maybe even thereafter. There is a backlog with increasing cases and increasing need for testing. There's a backlog with labs, the labs that our Verily site uses. The California Department of Public Health has prioritized those labs to conduct testing on essential workforce individuals and individuals that are high risk of being positive or are symptomatic. This will mean that the test results coming back from the Verily testing may be longer than five days, it could be up to seven days. One of the caveats of good news is that if it's a positive, we'll generally know fairly soon. The positives don't tend to take that long. So more than likely, those are negative tests that are taking that long. So I just wanted our public to be aware of that. The testing sites next week will be Thursday, July 9th at the Trinity Arts Center and that's from 8:00 to 11:45. And then Friday, July 10th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Trinity Fairgrounds in Hayfork. We are working with Verily to add Lewiston as a testing site. Willow Creek numbers have significantly decreased, so return on investment is limited. There were only a handful of people that were tested at the last testing site there. So we're going to add Lewiston and hopefully serve that underserved area. And that, we're looking at next Friday for that to happen. So more information will come out and we want to reiterate referring to our website for the public to see what those dates and times are. As a reminder, persons must be 18 years of age or older to be tested at these drive-through sites and willing to complete the online screening form and sign the COVID Public Health Authorization for the lab consent. That is all I have for you. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
So I, was that the fire chiefs meeting last night?
No, I did.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Sure. Yeah. Okay. So Marcy, if I heard you correctly, you still are at two cases, two positive cases throughout this whole time?
Yes.
And that?
That we know of.
That we know, of course. And also we've seen, of course, over the weekend, last week, 23 counties got on the watch list and had to take a few steps back in certain business sectors. It seems, judging by the numbers you informed us about today, that we're okay from falling onto that watch list at the moment?
At the moment, yes.
Okay. And so obviously businesses and individuals need to keep up doing what we're doing and testing in order to keep moving forward and keep open, I would say.
Regarding, thank you Supervisor Morris. Regarding doing what we're doing, I really want to reiterate the importance of masking and social distancing. We have some very high-risk sectors in our county. We have bars, we have some of the Fourth of July events, there was a live ban on the Fourth. These are extremely high-risk sectors. So I would caution that yes, but all around us, this virus is not going away. And so I would really, really emphasize the importance of those in the public to adhere to the guidance. It's a mandate that the governor has set out that you must wear a mask when you're indoors, in any congregate setting. You must wear a mask when you cannot social distance outside. The reason it's so important to do this is that it mimics herd immunity. In the absence of control of this virus or a vaccine or some other immunity, and we still don't know, again, if you get it once, are you immune? We just don't have that information. It's a very straightforward, easy thing to do that will prevent significant problems in Trinity County if we have to reclose. I'm hopeful that we don't, but I'm cautiously optimistic because it's still happening all around us. The state map is eye-opening. Those of us in public health that are experts in this understand what that means. And so I think it would be, the reason we wanted to include the contact tracing numbers is because it's misguided that we don't have a high number of positives. It's hopefully optimistic. However, with openings of other counties and travel back and forth in and out of the counties and it's all around us, we want to protect ourselves and our vulnerable populations and our essential workforce. And once again, we look at surges in hospitals where the same, it's come full circle where as you see these increases, you worry about surge in hospitals, not just because of COVID cases, but because if hospitals become saturated, they have to go to crisis standards of care. And what that means, it's horrendous for doctors and nurses to have to make those decisions. What that means is they prioritize beds. That means people go home that shouldn't be going home or that they don't get a ventilator or they don't get an ICU bed. It's horrendous. If you listen to some of the doctors in these hospitals, we don't want to do that. And so yes, we're optimistic. However, we are still in it and it is still problematic and could impact our population significantly.
So is Mr. Finley joining us? Supervisor Finley? I would like to give him the opportunity to ask any questions before I ask him. So it sounded like OES is now going to be trained to participate and I was wondering if you, in the drive-throughs, and I was wondering if those additional teams are going to be dispersed? It sounds like you have additional teams you're training to do the testing. And that's quite an increase in our quarantine. And I was wondering if you knew if a percentage or an amount of those people were quarantined due to a positive or a suspect on the testing? How is the testing influenced in how you're proceeding to go forward as a team?
So, thank you, Chair. So the testing and the contact tracing are separate. Let me deal with the testing first. So the testing tells us at that point in time who's positive and who's not. That's valuable. However, it's limited in that someone could be tested and go to Sacramento, go to Redding, go somewhere and become exposed. And so on the one hand, the testing is really good as a point in time and to give us, to really surveil, see, okay, at this point in time, what does this look like? What's the rate of positives? So with a low rate of positive, that tells us there's a community spread, right? However, it's challenging in that it doesn't really tell us what the risk is. It doesn't tell us we're out of the woods. It simply tells us that our positive rate shows that we don't have community spread if we have so many negatives. The other concern though, the testing, is that 30% of tests can be false negatives. So that's why this is one leg of the stool, of the three-legged stool, the testing. Contact tracing is the other one, prevention is the other one. So what's really important is for people to get tested. We want to keep people getting tested, but also to adhere to the guidance and the mandate of the governor and the public health experts around prevention, but also with contact tracing as a separate entity. The contact tracing is only linked to testing if there's a positive case for our county. So if we have a positive case as a result of the drive-through testing, we then isolate that person and reach out to all of their contacts and quarantine those individuals. Remember, isolation is for those that are positive or we believe that they are, they are so ill that they're likely positive and quarantine is for those that are exposed. So why we want to share the quarantine numbers is that we're seeing, we're getting notification from other counties of individuals being exposed to a positive case in another county and then coming back into Trinity County. So we then contact that person, quarantine them. And then based on what, it's a little tricky when you're talking about contact tracing and someone who's exposed. You don't necessarily go two or three deep. It really depends. So the first step is to quarantine the actual person exposed.
So, and you're expanding the teams?
So the contact tracing teams?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, to answer the OES question, we're simply reaching up through our resources to request disaster social, disaster service workers or get help with the logistics of the contact tracing with regard to traffic control, to pull back our public health logistics to look, we need to work on the contact tracing also, planning for flu drive-throughs. So that's on that end. With regard to contact tracing, yes, we've got 8D and we've applied for the ELC grant which will support contact tracing training and the work that those individuals will be doing. And so we're pretty, we've got four right now that are stood up and able to do contact tracing right now. We're going to be using the CalConnect platform which will really help facilitate efficiency of contact tracing.
Glad you brought up the grant because a lot of what we're doing as a county and what the teams are doing is to facilitate that we stay in the capacity to be reimbursed or reimbursed. And so I appreciate that you brought that up. Moving on to a situation with Escaton, I appreciate your quick response to Zoe Tarbell's letter and as soon as you can, if you could bring the board up to date with working that out with the Water Works District one, that would be great. And as a side note, Escaton has a lot of residents that are not able to drive, so I would encourage you to reach out to their director, Kristy Swift, and see if perhaps on the July 10th date that they do a mobile in the parking lot for those residents.
Yes, thank you. And if you wouldn't mind sending that information to me so I can make sure and follow up with my team. Regarding water testing, it's a foundational public health intervention and assessment to look, wastewater tells us tremendous things about viruses. That really falls under environmental health and I'll let Kristy address that. We are coordinating to stand up any funding that's needed for that. I know Kristy's been in conversation with our health officer, as have I, and so I'll let Kristy update you on any.
Well, I just really appreciate your promptness in responding to that and worrying.
Oh, my pleasure. My pleasure. Thank you for elevating that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisor Finley. Kristy Anderson, Trinity County Department of Public Health. So the primary objectives in our last meeting, I believe, you know, the governor's word came out right after the last board meeting and regarding masking, and our primary objective has been outreach and education to the businesses. And, you know, it's been a really tough issue because also the governor's put a lot of pressure and enforcing that and they've created their own strike team and they really have tried to educate businesses and what the results could be of that, you know, with CalOSHA, ABC and many other agencies involved. In fact, I wanted to give you a little bit of numbers. It looks like ABC made it to 6,000 in-person visits to bars and restaurants over the holiday weekend. They issued 483,000 directives to businesses and 52 citations and included 200 different inspectors. Being all the way up here in Trinity County, a lot of people think that we're immune to that, but as we've just seen, Calusa County did get added to that watch list. And really important to me is to keep us off that list if that's possible. So just really, really trying to give that guidance to businesses and we've been responding to many, many complaints and both people that are concerned and businesses on how to deal with employees that don't want to wear masks. Those have been the primary topics lately. We've also, with the help of IT, added an addendum onto the website where businesses can go and read the new masking requirements, try out if masks are required before entering the business, posters, and again, encouraging more businesses to follow this guidance.
And I know the whole team has worked hard for months trying to get us reopened throughout the county, our businesses. And of course, you've received a lot of complaints. Do you anticipate any of those agencies that are now part of the enforcement strike team to be visiting Trinity on those businesses who aren't complying?
I do expect them to find their way up here. We're on 29, you know, we were rolling on 299, Ivy 3, 36th, I mean, those are all roads to the coast anyway. I do expect it.
I could ask a lot about enforcement, whether on individuals wearing masks or businesses. And so my understanding is obviously we all try to get people to comply and educate them and have conversations, but if that doesn't work, then what's the next tool? In terms of if you're a business not complying?
If you're a business not complying, again, you can end up on that list of places that have a citation from that task force. It is the executive order. Locally, you know, we may not be able to do as much as say CalOSHA could do in that situation.
And have we as a county issued a notice of violations when we just have someone that just is not cooperating?
Regarding?
Their business?
Yes. And also another tool that we have is removing them from the compliance list. And we do like to advertise businesses that are doing well.
Thank you and thank you for all your work and everybody as well. Supervisor Finley, line is here. So would you like to address at this time or would you rather wait till there's more information on water testing?
No, I think the sewage testing is a great idea. I'm very supportive. I'm just hopeful that we can get funding to do something like that. It's quite expensive, but I'm sure that there is range up there. And I don't know how far we are on the list either.
I just want to thank the citizens for bringing that forward and the response of the team. So thank you.
Yeah, we've been looking at that since the beginning of this whole thing. There was a couple of counties that are buying right away.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the COVID team that wanted to speak today?
No, no.
No?
Thank you.
All right, well, we thank you and the board appreciates the update. And I do get a lot of feedback from people who watch it on Zoom, they're at work right now and so know that your reports are reaching out. Darryl probably could give us the numbers of how many hits he gets on his YouTube. And I think a lot of it is just to stay informed, so we appreciate your time. We know that behind the scenes, you guys are having to adapt daily and sometimes hourly to the changes of both state and local. So we appreciate all your effort to try to keep Trinity County off those lists. So thank you very much from the board. Be safe. So we are going to move into public comment. Now, this public comment time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on the agenda. All comments are limited to these, to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a poll through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on this agenda. However, the chair may refer to the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. I will also remind the Zoom and public calling in on phone that if you cannot hear the timer, we understand that, but you will be cut off at three minutes and the next person will be able to start presenting their public comment. If there's any foul language per se, you will also be terminated and the balance of your time will be forfeited. At this time, I would like to know if there's anyone in Zoom or on the telephone call that would like to speak in public comment. Please state your name loud and clear. If you're on Zoom and you're on mute, raise your hand so that Deputy Clerk of the Board, Ms. Tina, can recognize you. What was that?
Heather Gossman.
Heather Gossman. Welcome, Heather.
Good morning.
Is there anyone else?
Should I just begin?
Go ahead, Heather. Proceed.
I request to add item for the next board supervisors meeting, which would be an urgency moratorium on formula and for small box stores in Trinity County for the foreseeable future due to the COVID pandemic. The Hayfork Community Plan has been in progress, in the progress of being updated, but due to restrictions caused by the pandemic, the commitment as well as the ability to gather community input has been stymied. The Hayfork community deserves to have their updated community plan as well as their collective voice taken into consideration before any formula and/or small box store, especially in a time where so many smaller and local businesses are reeling and struggling to stay afloat during this crisis. Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Heather. I will, I will ask Dr. Coons to follow up. Could you please email that request to Dr. Coons and myself?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom for a public comment? Okay, moving to the telephone lines?
Can you hear me? Let's do a press for tele.
Yes, I can. Can you please state your name?
My name's Kenny Wiley. I live in Hayfork and I am involved in multiple nonprofit organizations, also work at Wides Market full-time. And I just wanted to ask the board to, again, echo what Heather said and consider this pause while we wrap up the meeting. And we need four or five actually new volunteers that have been working with the individuals that were working on the 96 Hayfork Community Plan. So there's new, more new people involved and we're trying to connect and seek counsel whether in the county or the outside legal counsel to make sure that verbiage is right so that we don't waste anybody's time when we're conducting this. So we're asking you guys to, you know, consider the moratorium or to direct the planning commission on their next meeting or county council to work with us if they're available. And there's a lot of things to consider, you know. And there's a lot of things to consider, you know, for this community plan, for the Hayford Community Plan that we are trying to put out to the public. There's a lot of confusion about, you know, what's a formula store and impacts on small communities. And we have a lot of information and there's a lot of information out there both ways. But specifically, you know, this institute for local self-reliance gives a lot of information on impacts of these types of business models on small communities. So it's not just about, you know, a new business popping up in Hayford with a long-term effect and how Hayford will or won't capitalize on specific businesses. So we just think it's a very important thing. There are a few ladies, I'll give signatures, a lot of signatures, you know, in favor of amending the community plan to include, you know, to exclude the formula, big box store, small box store models. So, you know, again, that's just more information. There's people working on it. We want to make sure we do it right the first time and get the information to the public and make sure that everybody knows, you know, the community goal to move forward for Hayford. So thank you guys for considering that.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Are there anyone else? Is there anyone else on the Zoom that wishes to address the board's supervisors in public comment? Anyone on the public telephones? Is there anyone in the lobby or out in the parking lot? I know we had quite a few, so. We're only allowing two in at a time?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, this is Mike in Hayford. Is this appropriate time for me to comment on the cannabis tax proposal?
No, sir. That item is, I believe, item number 5.1. And the time to comment on that would be prior to the board's discussion. So it'll be later.
Is that on the, is that on the agenda today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait.
Rick, was there anyone? No. So being heard and seeing no more public comment, we will move on to consent. Oh, presentations. Thank you, Tina. So the first one, we already had. The second one, item 1.2, receive a presentation from James regarding the 2020 Sodri- plan is postponed for later today. Unfortunately, he had a conflict in his schedule. So we will be bringing that back before the board, but not at this time. And I don't know what time, so I apologize. Trinity County Transportation Committee Commission, item 1.3, receive a presentation from the Trinity County Resource Conservation District regarding the active transportation plan. No fiscal impact. Rick, I apologize. We are going to take a short break. Don't go anywhere. We're having some IT problems. And for those in the audience, so you know, all chairs that you're sitting in were disinfected. If you come up to the podium to talk, it was wiped down with disinfectant, but there is disinfectant in the back. You can feel free to wipe it down again. And there's a track hand in the back. Just dispose of the disinfectant wipe prior to exiting the room. And we really appreciate you bearing with us during this COVID situation. Thank you. The mic was wiped down. And Supervisor Finley has joined us. He's in the vicinity and listening in. Welcome Supervisor Finley. We are so appreciative of you being able to be here with us. Okay. Please begin.
Morning. Back about, it was probably seven, eight years ago now, there was new federal highway legislation called MAP 21. And at that time, Caltrans had also started taking up what was called an active transportation program. Before that, it had been known as transportation enhancements, which was a formulary program that gave us 10% of our stip every year to go out and bicycle and different trail type of projects. And so when the active transportation program came out, it went over to be a competitive grant program, which I personally feel has been very urban oriented. But one of the things that we didn't learn through the program is that you have to have good active transportation plan to apply for money in the ATP program. And the ATP program has grown tremendously over the years. It's even with the new transportation legislation that's in the works, it's probably going to become about a half a billion to two quarters of a billion dollar program for active transportation within California. So it's a very robust program that we want to have the opportunities to participate in. But again, in order to do that, you have to have a good active transportation plan. So many years back, we got a grant to put one together and we solicited the RCD to help us. And so with that, we have the plan and it's ready to be presented to the board. And I had Amelia Flight from RCD here to make that presentation.
Hello, board. It's great to see you again. I hope you all are well. Thank you for having me today. I am here as a project coordinator from the Trinity County Resource Conservation District. And I'm just one of many coordinators that have worked to put this plan together for you today. So here, it's a draft form to have your input on and we will be coming back to you at a later date for adoption. I'm going through. So the current draft is 202 pages. I'm going to hit some of the key topics today. Obviously, I will be making it quite a bit shorter than being able to cover it quite in depth. So please feel free to contact me if you have any other questions or comments about this document or any changes you would like to see. So with that, we'll continue on. So what is active transportation? It's human-powered transportation, and that includes traveling through walking, cycling, and also through rolling. In the development of this plan, we also looked at some of the multimodal resources as well to help some of our disabled communities in developing these different proposals. So the Trinity County Active Transportation Plan is being modeled after the California Active Transportation Program. We are venture to meet all of the different goals and stipulations required to have it as a valid active transportation plan recognized by the state of California. This program has worked to combine some of the previous bicycling pathways programs and also the safe routes to schools program as well as transportation alternative programs. So there's many different funding sources that have all come cooperatively into this California transportation program. So the vision for Trinity County's active transportation program is to provide a safe and accessible network of pathways that connect the communities and enhance the recreational and healthy living opportunities. So primarily, it's for our residents and to promote their safe and economic travel throughout the county, but also provide access to our tourism and healthy living objectives. The goals are safety, connectivity, and our programming. So we want to provide safe transportation, enhance our current transportation network. We want to see a greater connectivity, so connecting to some of our key destinations such as schools, grocery stores, clinics, and other services. And also, we want to see programming that will enhance awareness to promote the safety, promote use of these systems, and also education, providing access to all. Awesome. So what are some of the benefits that this active transportation plan can provide for our community? And it starts with the physical benefits. So in the most recent ACT CHIS, which is the California Health Survey, stated that one in three of our active youth have been active within the last week. And so even though we're above our California state average and having these students be more active over and all, it's still only one in three of our student population. So it would be great to have bigger investment for our kids to see them walking or biking to school. And so that's one of the considerations that was taken into developing this plan. And as for our adults, we see that we're very on par across California as to overall health and our activity of our adults. So moving into our mental health, looking at some of the different metrics for how to evaluate mental health for adults. One of them is looking at family life impairment and also work impairment. So the disruption of work based on emotions interrupting, causing to increase with frustrations causing more fights and those kinds of things. So looking to decrease the overall number of disruptions in the work and home life can be a result of increased exercise and looking at greater exposure to green space. Many different researchers have found that enhancing exposure to green space, being outdoors, and also an increase in exercise and decreasing these overall disruptions to the family and work-life balance. So we're also going to look at promoting that this is incorporated into everyone's daily life, that it's something that everyone has access to and that they can come out and walk to school or walk to work and that this is something everyone can utilize. Moving on to the socioeconomic relief. And so this is based on the different census tracts, the five census tracts in Trinity County. If you go to the next slide. All of the census tracts within Trinity County are within, or sorry, are over the 50th percentile of poverty within the state of California. And so with that, it has been analyzed that there's approximately 320 households that are without a vehicle, an operating vehicle. And so to be able to provide this active transportation as an economically and available resource will allow those families to be able to access the clinic, access other essential services that they need to sustain their daily lives. So this will help to provide some relief to those individuals and those families that could benefit from this plan. And then on to air quality. So in the air quality overall, Trinity County scores very well in air quality. So we would not see a huge impact from decreasing the overall motorized use in Trinity County. However, there's always room for improvement and so we can always look to drive down our ozone emissions. We also do have a high percentage of asthma with, or percentile of asthma reported within one of our active trans, or sorry, within one of our census tracts. And so working to provide a healthier environment through less emissions will help benefit those individuals as well. And then lastly, the benefits of active transportation and it's a safety to our users. And so over the last 10 years, so looking at a time period from 2008 to 2017, there were 11 pedestrian and 11 bicyclist incidents, accidents across the county. And so of those, there were few that had major injuries, one bicyclist and one pedestrian. But overall, we've seen fairly low reports of bicyclist and pedestrian injury. But here's an example of one of the maps. This is from Hayford, which identifies where four of the bicyclist injuries occurred and where one of the pedestrian accidents occurred. And so when we were looking to model where to provide further improvements and also to draw attention with signage to where pedestrians or cyclists would be using this, you'll see that we have proposed with, in cooperation with GHD Incorporated, which was a contractor who assisted with this program, directly correlates to where some of these accidents have occurred and how to prevent them in the future. So we can go to the next one. All right, so what kinds of projects were we looking at and how did they come about? So the types of projects that were proposed within this project was looking at crosswalks, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, share the road signs, overpass crossings, bicycle parking, trail system development and expansions, and also looking at the various styles and classes of pathways. So we looked at class one, two, and three paths. And I'll show you in just a moment the differentiation between those three. Also looking at shoulder widening and path development, again, to enhance safety. And then also the programming, so promoting and sustaining the current programs that we have and developing further programs. So we'll go to the next one. All right, so this is a class one bikeway. And so this is off a road. There's no roadway adjacent, or if it is, it's separated by a large barrier. And this is just for cyclists and pedestrians or roller skates, any other kind of rolling or active transportation. And you can see that they have a shoulder separate from the actual pathway, which provides access for people to move over as others pass. And so this is one of the safest moves as there's no other particular access along these pathways. We'll move to the next one, which is a class two pathway. So this is where you have your existing bike lane along the road. There's no large separation or boundary barrier between the road and the bicycle. But you do have the painted lane that provides them with their own access on the shoulder. And then the final, which is a class three, is just a widened shoulder that provides an access route for pedestrians or cyclists to travel along our roadways. And so you'll see as we go through that there's a lot of different colors which represent the class one through class three bike lanes. And we'll talk about that when I get to the actual proposals. All right, so the communities that were included in this program are the, are Burnt Ranch, Coffee Creek, Douglas City, Hayford, Kind, Junction City, Lewiston, Mad River, Ruth, Trinity Center, Trinity Village, and Beaverville. And why these communities were selected were based on interest in the overall existing active transportation within these areas. So going through, at the very beginning of these projects, before this project, before I was involved, the project coordinator and a few other coordinators went around these communities and met with the public and also met with the leaders of the school districts to discuss how to enhance travel to the schools and also what would benefit the children of the community. So the majority of the input is from the public, is from the voices here in Trinity County. And so with that, there was also a public survey that went out. And it asked, what kinds of projects do the residents of Trinity County want to see? And we found that they wanted to see sidewalks, pathways, trails, and crosswalks. And you'll see that as a repeating theme. What did we put into the plan? Sidewalks, pathways, trails, and crosswalks. All right, and so we'll look at the next one. So that was in general to Trinity County. This is specifically around schools. What kinds of projects do you want to see around the schools? This is sidewalks, pathways, and crosswalks again. So you will see that there is some of the signage has been increased. And that's really to meet our safety goals, especially around schools. I know some of you volunteer and have been present to allow the kids to cross the crosswalks to get to school. And so these signs are another way to bring attention to help our children cross safely as they access their school buildings. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So finally, get to get and look at the projects. So here, we're looking at Burnt Ranch. And here you'll see around the school, they've looked to widen the pathways around the school, widen the road to provide a safe shoulder for the children to walk to and from school. You see that they propose a school crossing, a head sign, and also a share the road to remind drivers that there's people along the roadway and possibly children crossing to get to school. You'll see that there's the new proposals. Those are the proposals that have been established from this plan in this process. The county proposed our previous proposals from existing plans that the Trinity County Transportation Commission has put together or from the Trinity County Bike Ways Plan, which is already existing. Where we're looking to broaden that and enhance it for all other forms of active transportation at this time. forms of active transportation at this time, and to fit into the California Active Transportation Program to receive future funding. So we'll move on. We're going to look, here we have Coffee Creek, and again, we have signage to cross the highway, three signage along Coffee Creek Road to enhance the awareness for drivers traveling along. And you'll also notice and start to see a pattern that many of the highways, State Route 3, State Route 299, and State Route 36, are all also outlined as either being class two or class three bike ways. This is proposed to connect the communities to one another and allow for active transportation for individuals who would like to bike to and from different communities they access to. Now with Coffee Creek, between Coffee Creek and Trinity Center, it's proposed to increase that to a class two, so it has its bike lanes established along that route because that's a highly traveled route for tourists, and also to help connect those two communities who are maybe a little bit more intertwined than some of our other communities that might be further spread apart, with also a section of road that would allow for this to happen safely, where other sections might have too many twists or turns or confinements due to rock faces that wouldn't be able to accommodate this kind of class two bike way. And so we'll move on. And into Douglas City, again, a lot of it is clustered around the schools, so we have a lot of the school crossing, a head sign, the intersection. There's also many proposals throughout this plan to enhance some of the current trails that children are using to get to school. So evaluating the location of the current trails that are between neighborhoods and connect them through easements, pull them into the county easements, and allow for maintenance and upgrades to those trails to provide safe access for kids to school. All right. And we'll go to the next one. Proposed active transportation facilities in Hayfork. So here we'll see you have a lot of the rapid flashing beacons proposed, which is very similar to where the bicycle accidents were. And so this is proposing that when people are going to use the crosswalks, and there's a couple of proposals for new crosswalks, to cross Highway 3, State Route 3, that these rapid flashing beacons will have the lights that signal to drivers that somebody's about to cross the road. Think about here, you go through Weberville with the spiral staircases, it's always a little difficult to try to see around the cars and around the pillars if there's a person waiting to cross. So using these rapid flashing beacons as a signal to drivers, if somebody's about to step out, that would greatly enhance the safety of our active transportation users. Moving on, in Hayfork, we're also looking to have a significant advance in the trail section. Thank you. So it's not just about the concrete developments here, we're also looking at the overall trails. So here we can see that there are some existing portions of the Hayfork Community Trail System, but there's also many more proposed, looking to enhance the development of the swinging bridge loop, and also looking to develop more trails and access up along the Ewing Reservoir. And there's a big key here, and that is to connect them. So we want to look to connect the trail systems and the active transportation system within Hayfork up to the Ewing Reservoir System and out into the exterior sections of Hayfork. And why you're not seeing any bright lights, bright colors along the main access road of State Route 3 through Hayfork or along Morgan Hill Road or Oak Ab is because those already have active transportation. They already have bike lanes, they already have this option. And so working to develop and connect the exterior components of the community will provide more accessibility. And next. All right. So here in Hay Palm, so again, around the school, looking to widen the roads, looking to have a school crossing, because there's also the community center there, even if the school may not be active at the current moment. And who knows if in the future the school may be utilized again. And as you can see as well, we're looking to have the class three bike ways connect Hyam Palm to surrounding communities as well. Next. Junction City, very similar. A lot of work has gone into go around the school, also along State Route 3 and up Canyon Creek, Dutch Creek Road to provide safe travel for students coming down to school, to provide a reminder to the drivers that this is a shared road, that there'll be students and also adults traveling these sections. But there's also proposals to widen the road, to provide safer travel, and then also looking to provide access across State Route 3 to access the Junction City Park. So as the majority of the community lives over on Dutch Creek Road or off of Red Hill Road, providing a safe route up to the park would significantly benefit many of the children and families within that area. And that was a major concern that we heard from that community, that they'd really like to see some enhanced option to provide access to that park. Next. Okay. So for Lewiston, again, similar a lot around the school, providing access to the school. They're looking for a class one bike way to provide access to the school. And one thing we'll see in the future is that there may be one that you'll be able to enhance instead of having to build a whole new one. So looking also to connect the Trinity Transit Bus Stop so that people can travel and use that network a little easier as well. Next. Again, around the school, same thing over and over again. We're seeing the school zones, the share the road, the widening of the shoulders. Mad River, the school district was looking at providing a sidewalk from the school up to State Route 36 to provide safer access on that route as well. Next. And looking in Ruth, so the big thing here is a crosswalk that's to be added to connect the marina to some of the other facilities such as a restaurant. And the rest is to connect overall throughout the county, providing access for active transportation. Next. All right. Trinity Center, again, a lot around the school, looking to provide another crosswalk and bike racks for the students at the school so that they can use active transportation and also have a safe place to store their bikes throughout the day. Next. And then the Trinity Village, sharing the road signs and also a crosswalk to provide access to the communities that are living across State Route 299 to access their local restaurant there. Next. And here we are in Weberville, so it's quite busy, we've got a lot going on, looking to provide the same thing. You see many rapid flashing beacons in and along, proposed in and along State Route 299 here to provide safety for the active transportation users. A few more crosswalks have been proposed to help provide more access to different neighborhoods that may not have the availability, they may need to walk a couple of blocks to get to a crosswalk at this point in time, and so providing a few more to allow them to access the other side of town more readily. And also looking for a share the road symbols. Many of the share the road symbols where they're proposed, Oregon Street and a few others, are based on where there have been previous bicycle and pedestrian accidents coming around sharp turns. It's good to remember, there could be a bicyclist or pedestrian coming down the other way. And again, looking to propose to put bike racks at some of the schools and major points throughout town, to some of the key destinations, and also just provide some safe place to park it, such as within the historic district, provide that access so that people may mill around and shop while their bike is safely stored. Lastly, there's looking to provide other access to the industrial parkway, providing a route that will connect from LeFond Park to the industrial parkway as a safe alternative route to travel around and behind State Route 299 to access the businesses in the industrial parkway. Next. And so for the trail systems that were considered as part of this program, we're looking at the Weber Basin Trail System, the Ewing Reservoir Trails, and the Hayfork Community Trails. Further, there's some larger trails that are being proposed, such as the Great Redwood Trail, which is going through southern Trinity along the old railway system. And then also looking at the trail around the lake, a trail to connect Reading to Lewiston, and also the trail from Douglas City to Junction City along the Trinity River has been discussed within this plan. Next. Overall, so this is the trail I was discussing earlier in Lewiston, so you have some existing trails throughout and pathways throughout the county that with some maintenance, which there are funds to grant funding to improve existing active transportation networks, that this could be utilized again by students. And some students currently do utilize it in its current state, but enhancing it and providing access would be a great benefit and attribute for our county. Next. And so with the prioritization, how all of the projects, we had over 150 projects proposed within this plan, and so these projects were prioritized based on their safety benefit, connectivity benefit, the cost, public support, and the ease of implementation. So overall, we'll see that the new crosswalk, which is in Ruth, was proposed to be the number one priority because it was, it was going to have a safety benefit, it was going to provide connectivity between two key points such as their store and their marina, it was going to have a low cost, has the public support as they ask for this to be considered, and it has an ease of implementation, painting some lines would be, and of course getting all of the overall CEQA and all the other considerations and permitting. But compared to some of the larger projects to put in overpasses, this was a simpler project. And then next, there is a full discussion of the prioritization projects and the appendices if you have any questions. At that, we're here to provide safe and accessible network to our communities. Do you have any questions? Supervisor, do you have any questions?
Just a couple. I noticed that of the surveys that were done, it was about only 50 responses from the survey monkey. Is that what was essentially deemed the information from the public?
No. So there were meetings that were, community meetings that were held that I believe had a higher participation, I'd have to go back and look at the exact minutes, but there were community meetings that were held to discuss and markup maps that were made to discuss what projects the communities wanted to see. And the survey was just supplemental, not all participants of the community meetings participated in the survey, and the other way around, not all participants in the survey were available to attend one of the public meetings.
And then is this like an open plan, or does this get locked in for a certain period of time, or does it remain in, does it adjust throughout the years?
I would have to refer that to Holly.
I know.
All right. Rex says it's a dynamic plan.
That's all.
Supervisor Gobes? Supervisor Max?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks again to making sure that Washington Street by Elementary School is crucial. I've already asked our Department of Transportation to at least re-stripe some of the markings already because they're very faded, and that Washington Street gets used a lot more now since schools had to reconfigure their footprints somewhat, so glad that's on the list.
Supervisor Finley, would you like to ask any questions? I'm looking to Dr. Coons, and I'm assuming he's going to text them.
Yeah, because obviously it's 100%.
Okay. Okay. So thank you. I do have a quick question. In Hayfork, we have equestrian riders, and I didn't see that anywhere, or they just considered in the bike lane? Could you explain if there's a separation between equestrian and equestrian?
So to my knowledge, there is not. We see a lot of the equestrians utilizing the same resources. The equestrian use that I discussed within the document itself is more specific to the endurance races and their use of the trail system, but that is something that we can develop more and put into this statement more wholesomely.
Really appreciate the, well done on the PowerPoints, and for the public, it's in the agenda, and there's a lot more information in the backup, so we appreciate all that. And it's available, any comments can be provided to info@TCRCD before July 12. Thank you. Thank you. So Dr. Coons, I see it's just after 10:00, I'm wondering if it's okay with you and Board if perhaps we allow a public, our county, our 10 o'clock public hearings, it's only one item, and that way we can go back to if our presenter is ready and then go into consent, if that's okay with you?
Sure. Yeah, it's a, we could put a 10 o'clock or thereafter, so it's a force discretion if they want to.
So why don't we go ahead and move this grant forward, item 3.1. Item 3.1, conduct a public hearing to consider community development block grants, CDVG, applicants, applications for public facilities, public services, public improvements, and economic development, and adopt a resolution which authorizes applications for funding and the execution of grant agreements for CDVG program income funding and any amendments thereto, and adopt a resolution which authorizes an application for funding and the execution of grant agreement for CDVG coronavirus, parentheses CB, funding and any amendments thereto, and adopt a resolution which authorizes an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement for CDVG dash economic development funding and any amendments thereto. Potential revenue in the amount of $101,903 from CDVG CB coronavirus, funding in up to $750,000 in economic development funding to the grants department, permission to expand CDVG program income revenues on hand in the amount of $711,750. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Supervisors. Suzy Kaufman is your county grants coordinator. Once again, I stand in front of you to discuss CDVG, Community Development Block Grant Funding. I don't know if you guys know, but the CDVG program went through a redesign a year ago, and a lot of the things that I come in front of you to discuss and hold public hearings on have been redesigned at the state level, and they're still working through the process. So one of the items on the agenda, program income, I've been here three times before to discuss, and now we're lumping it in with three other program income applications. So in front of you today are three different resolutions, each one of them for a different pot of CDVG funding. As Madam Chair read, there is four applications that we are planning to submit using our on-hand CDVG program income funding. There's another application that we're going to submit for CDVG economic development funding, and that will be to basically address our coronavirus impact as it relates to businesses. And this will be round two funding. If you were with me before when we discussed CDVG and addressing the needs of our economic development community and our businesses, we have $101,000 coming from the state, that's the COVID money. That will be round one funding, and the economic development money will be round two, probably to reach our county somewhere in September. So we have in front of you four program income applications, an economic development application, and a coronavirus application, each of which, again, are CDVG separate pots of money and therefore separate resolutions, I'm sorry. And if there's any questions about any of that, I will answer questions at this time. Supervisor Gobes?
Yeah, just one question. I noticed that there is funding for the CDVG bathrooms, and the location wasn't specified in the backup, but I believe it was for the North Fork Range.
Correct.
And I just heard, someone just wanted to verify that, so let's just do that.
Yes. So program income funding, we are at the North Fork Range, we're going to update the registries, make them ADA compliant. We are putting a fire apparatus structure in Junction City. We are making some upgrades to the Hayfork Park, and what's the fourth one? No, my brain is not with me right now. Oh, I'm sorry, buy an ambulance for... Oh, I'm sorry, buy an ambulance for Southern Trinity, sorry. And that particular project is leveraged with Humboldt Area Foundation funding. County's going to put in $150,000 of our program income and the Humboldt Area Foundation and a little bit of funding from Star is going to make up the difference. So it's a leveraged project, which really looks good to the state. We'll get some bonus points for that.
Supervisor Groves? Supervisor Finley, any questions? Supervisor Morris?
So you answered my one question, the four applications?
Sure.
And then the other pot of money is the economic development COVID help business type projects. Was there another type of funding for another type of project I'm overlooking or no?
So there's two different pots of funding for economic development, and they have two different titles. So one is an allocation, not competitive, $101,000, and we're going to put some program income money to make that $200,000. And then there's up to $750,000 in the economic development pot of money, which is again another application. Out of that $750,000, there will be $500,000 for business assistance, which means any business that's over five employees, counting the owner. And then $250,000 for micro enterprise, excuse me, micro enterprise technical assistance, if I pronounced that right. That's $250,000 for employees or businesses with five or fewer employees, counting the owner.
And when will those applications be available for the first round for business, interested businesses?
As soon as I get the contract from the state, I will release the applications. We're going to use the survey that we sent out as the starting point. Again, the survey is not the application itself, it's just to help us identify the number of businesses and the need that we have in the community. But I'm going to take the names and contact information out of that survey and then reach out to those folks to get them the applications.
Great.
And I will put a notice in the paper as well that the funding has arrived.
So I have no questions. I'm going to open it up to the public and we're going to start with public in the audience or out in the foyer. If there's any public that has any feedback on this. Okay, so I'm going to also say for Zoom, if there's anybody on Zoom, if you can indicate by raising your hand and the folks aboard, Ms. Tina will identify you, and on the phone. And I'm not seeing anybody come in, so I'm going to close the public comment. And there are three resolutions. We can start with the CDVG. We have them in different orders on the attachment, so we'll go off the agenda. We'll go off of the program income projects first, so I entertain a motion. So moved.
Supervisor Brown? Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
So moving on to a resolution for CDVG coronavirus parentheses CB. So moved.
Second.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
And our last, CDVG but not released, economic development funding. So moved.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll move back into consent and I'm just going to ask the board, is everybody go, good to move on to consent? Or do you, does anybody need a break?
Can we do that time?
Okay, so we will take, for those on Zoom, we're going to have a five minute, well, we'll just say we'll resume back at 10:20. So welcome back to our 7/7/2020 agenda and we are going to go into our consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Supervisor Brown?
And Chair, I'd like to go to 2.4 for additional supplemental information. Tina, do you mind passing those?
Supervisor Groves?
2.3.
Supervisor Finley?
Yep.
Supervisor Morris?
2.6.
Anybody from staff, department heads, opening it up to the public? Anybody on Zoom or calling in or in the lobby? Closing public comment, do they entertain a motion? So moved.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Item 2.3, Supervisor Groves. Adopt a resolution which supports the display of the national motto, quote, "And God we trust," unquote, in the Trinity County Chambers in a prominent location, no fiscal impact.
I pulled this because I don't find this non-controversial. I've got a lot of emails on this, so I just, I assumed you'd put her on to explain the thought process and why we should do this.
I'd be happy to and I'm appreciative. I also have had conversations and emails and I have had one person request that I read, if I can find it, I have to present that. So as you probably saw in the backup, starting approximately 10 years ago, counties and city councils throughout our nation proceeded with allowing it. California has over 100 now. I lost count, it's in the backup. I actually wanted to bring this forward months ago, but with everything going on, I was hoping that it would be, COVID would be over and that the public could be here because this is near and dear to so many people. And could you receive Diana Sheen's? Okay, could you read that into the record? I was supposed to do that during public comment and I forgot. I'll go ahead and finish my train of thought and then you can come back to me. And I apologize if you're watching, Diana Sheen. So, as it turns out, things progressed with COVID and as we have seen a decline in the morale of our nation, our state, and our communities, I felt this would be more appropriate as we celebrate independence and as, I spent the weekend rereading our founding papers and our Declaration of Independence and it, I'm really glad to be able to bring this to the board at this time. I feel that the motto has such historical significance. I believe that we need to find things to rally around and unite us instead of dividing us, and I feel that this is an appropriate time to rally around the fact that historically we've acknowledged not perfect men, but not perfect women, but people that were willing to sacrifice and many of them, including our founders, were nourished in the fact that they believed in God and that we're not saying what God, we're not saying, and it's our national motto, it's something that we should be able to come together as Americans and celebrate. And there are so many other city councils and county councils, including a county council as in board supervisors. I know in other places they're called other things besides board supervisors, so I don't want to say just board supervisors. Other jurisdictions, as you know, through NACO have a varied name, so I don't want them to be board supervisors. But that's why I ended up being brought forward now, which I'm glad to do. And at that, I'm just going to go ahead and, this is the only one that requested to be read into the record.
I'm sending this to the board to say that we support the adoption of a resolution which supports the display of the national motto, "And God we trust," to be displayed in a prominent and respectful location in Trinity County Chambers. This is item 2.3 in this week's agenda, Tuesday, July 7, 2020. We feel that displaying our nation's motto will be a much needed return to bring the citizens back to the respect that the United States is currently missing and is very much needed. The Lord has spoken through the scriptures that He will heal our nation when we sincerely ask and request it. We trust to have promises made and promises kept. Most sincerely, Diana and Terri Sheen.
So that was the only one that, because of COVID, they, they can't be here and respectfully wanted that read into the record and I appreciate you letting me go backwards because I totally forgot. So, the letter from the Pacific Justice Institute is in the backup. It's free for our use to say why it's legal. In God We Trust National Victory List, it goes alphabetically through the states and you can see that California has a wide support throughout California displaying in God we trust. So, I was presented with this at NACO and when Supervisor Morris and I were there a year ago. So I've actually been sitting on it for quite a while, hoping to do it earlier this year, but I feel that it's very appropriate as we celebrate our glories and independence. Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say that I respect the historical significance of it and I appreciate that.
I'm getting feedback and I'm not sure if they're directing this to us or not.
The video's just frozen.
So I did entertain a motion.
Did we ask for that public comment?
I, I did, but then I went backwards because I forgot and Tina read that, so I'll officially close. Thank you. Officially close the public comment unless you think that person was trying to speak. Okay. It was very difficult if you're on Zoom. It was very, it was partial, so we'll close the public comment. And I will second.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
No.
Supervisor Brown, you pulled 2.4, appoint. I'm not going to be, Karis K. Stockwell to the planning commission for the position of planning commission for District 4 to serve the term concurrent with District 4 supervisor, but you have had additional information that you want to share on the side.
Correct, yeah, Tina's passing it out. I received additional application for the position after the agenda had been made, so I apologize for that. The decision was not easy. There was a lot of deliberation and input from members of the community. However, after my deliberation, I've chosen to go with Duncan McIntosh as the appointment for the commission and I was very pleased and happy to see his interest. He's a sixth generation local, born and raised in Burt Ranch, and I think he did a great job representing the District 4 community and, yeah, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, so item 2.4, just to be clear, is no longer Ms. Stockwell, but is now Mr. McIntosh?
Correct. The point of order, does it not have to be a signed new item? According to, Margaret wants to state to this.
Margaret, can you clarify this? County Council, Ms. Long?
The procedure was ran by a county council in advance and approved.
I don't know how this can't be a new item.
The item is the appointment of the commission and the information was received after the agenda had been built, so.
That's fine, it's just I don't know how that gets noticed in public properly.
So, Dr. Coons, we do want to text you, Margaret, and asking her for clarification on 2.4, whether or not we can proceed with this item or if it has to be tabled and re-agendaize. Thank you.
Have you read the item 2.4?
Yes, sir.
Appointment, planning commission, District 4.
Yes, sir. And then Duncan had, excuse me, Supervisor Brown had?
Does it say which is to be appointed?
Yes.
Appointment, planning commissioner?
The item itself is 2.4, the appointment of a planning commissioner for District 4. The requested action is what is being adjusted by the supplemental information received.
Mine says appoint Shuri Stockwell.
If you open that, I'm going to get the full item attachment.
But this is the agenda.
Margaret can't hear anything.
County Council was adamant about the procedure. Who else has heard it?
Everybody else can hear but County Council?
This text, Susan, she said she, it's audio.
So we'll just wait till Margaret clarifies so we proceed. For those on Zoom, you're not frozen. We are still here, we're just waiting to.
The videos in the black, they have audio. Oh, the video's back, live, okay, the video's back.
Is the audio working?
Yes.
So does County Council know the question before her?
I have a picture, but I'm not getting response.
Hello, Board, I am now back and can hear you. I heard there was an issue with 3.4, I'm sorry, 2.4?
Yes, yes, Ms. Long, thank you for joining us. The question before the board is whether this item should be tabled and that the name be replaced or whether we can proceed by just adjusting as agendaized with the corrected name.
So that's the board's pleasure. The item is for the board to approve a selection by the supervisor for a planning commissioner of his choice. My understanding was an application, additional application was received after posting agenda. The board has the option of approving as written the individual that is selected on the agenda, approving somebody else, or not approving anybody at all. So I believe the way it is written would encompass enough that allows this item to go forward if that's the board's pleasure. The board can also continue it if that is how you choose to move.
Supervisor Brown indicated that he would like to move forward with this appointment. I believe that it's date sensitive for the planning commission and so is that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to clarify the understanding.
Yeah, I would like to move the item forward. I don't see any reason why not do it, there is a planning commission meeting this week. The process for this wasn't necessarily clear from the get-go, so having gotten this far into the process, I'm able to see why there's reason. Further, I believe, and Margaret can correct me, as a board, I can also bring a new item to the meeting for this agenda. I don't know if that allows, the timing of the board meeting has passed, but if a new item is required for that, I believe I can still add that intention.
So I think we're within the jurisdiction to go ahead and just substitute. So I think we're within the jurisdiction to go ahead and just substitute Duncan Lloyd McIntosh's name to the planning commission. So we are adjusting item 2.4. So I am going to ask if the supervisors have any questions on this or any comments that they want to state before I open it to public comment.
Yeah, I have a comment. I do not appreciate getting dropped a bombshell at the meeting when we have to have this discussion without having, you know, been able to talk to you personally to ask questions.
Isn't that supposed to occur during this board meeting?
Not necessarily. But so the number one question, is he still a cannabis grower or is he still a legal activity cannabis grower or is he still a legal cannabis grower?
And personally, and Margaret, maybe you can advise me, I don't think I can speak on behalf of the applicant, but it is my understanding that the applicant currently has zero interest in any cannabis, period.
Well, that's a crucial question when we have a general plan coming up to the planning commission that will have a lot to do with cannabis, but it's dancing. And I think that that's a question if I was you, I would ask, point blank.
Well, as I said, I can't speak for him, but it is my understanding based on conversations with the applicant, he has zero interest in cannabis. If he felt otherwise, it would be up to him at the time of the item approaching the commission for him to recuse himself as he feel needed.
Well, we don't need commissioners that are accusing themselves. We need people that can hit the ground and run.
I agree with you.
And so to me, that's an extremely important question to be highly confident that what you said is the case.
Yeah. And I mean, I agree with you so much to the point of that's why the previous commissioner stepped down was based on recusal issues. So at this moment, Duncan McIntosh has their interest in cannabis cultivation personally or commercially. So I see no reason why that'd be a problem. Proceed. He's had zero interest in over 12 months. Proceedually, I see no issue why they're starting to move forward.
Does any of those supervisors?
I do apologize for the bombshell. It was, I don't realize why I had to bombshell, but the last minute was unintentional. Up until the second application was received, there was no additional applicant, hence why there was only one being listed on the agenda. I respect your desire to have the time to review the information and all, and if it's really needed to table the item and push it back, I'm partially open to that, but also it's my understanding that I can bring a new item to the agenda at the agenda based on these requirements. So unless you have a specific problem, I don't.
So Supervisor Finley has a question or a comment? May you proceed?
Yeah.
Would it help to hear from Duncan McIntosh personally? He doesn't seem to be on the part of, he's not participating right now, but perhaps we could get the latest.
I'd be fine with delaying and continuing to text.
Once Duncan is, once Duncan has made a vote.
I'd be interested in, I mean, you can see the question. The answer is the question, do you presently hold a position that might conflict with your duties for a particular Board? The answer is no. Margaret, is there any weigh-in on this as far as procedural rollout?
Is there any concern regarding weighing? Is that your question?
No. As far as the procedural rollout of continuing with the item based on Supervisor Groves' concerns?
The concerns I don't think are procedural concerns. They're more a relationship between supervisors' concerns from a legal perspective. You submitted three out of two applications for the Board to consider. You're making a recommendation of one. The Board can consider at this time when they have additional questions, they have the pleasure of continuing the item and getting additional permission. But no, procedurally, we're moving forward in an appropriate manner.
Do I need a specific number of votes for the Board to move the item forward? Or is it just? Yeah, how does that work?
You still have any questions? Can I have Supervisor Morris?
Yeah.
Supervisor Morris?
Well, as you mentioned earlier about Commissioner Ford, it's a shame to lose him since he's been on the commission for a while and really has a good understanding of the role. And due to conflict of interest issues, he had to keep accusing himself. So we certainly don't want to see that repeated on any, from any commissioner. And so does he no longer have a license with the county?
Correct.
Okay. So he's. All right. Supervisor.
I'd be in favor of moving this forward as planned with Supervisor Brown with his request honoring his request.
So I'll open it to the public comment and then we can move on with the, when they vote or a motion. So I am opening it to the public, both on the phone, Zoom, and in the lobby. I can't, we only receive public comment. I'm not in a position to answer questions. Veronica, if you would like to make a comment, please go ahead, but I'm not in a position where we can just have questions.
Oh, I wasn't, hi, I wasn't going to ask a question.
Okay.
Hi, Veronica Kelly Albes, Douglas City. I would respectfully disagree that it's not a procedural issue. No background information or application has been supplied to the public. I came on and I had researched the one that was on the website and had been presented and great fit it looked like. So, and I love Duncan, but I think procedurally, you would have to give that same information on someone else. I mean, did the Board of Supervisors receive the same information on Duncan as you got on Charis? I think that's super important that the public has the opportunity to see what is being presented because it's they have constituents in their section of Trinity County, but they make decisions for all of Trinity County as a collective. So I think it would be super important to have public information. Thank you.
So the public information that has now been provided to the Board of Supervisors will be in the backup in the minutes, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public comment?
I have David Albes with me. I raised my hand, but for a different speaker. I just want to point that out.
We're having a little bit of IT, but for some reason, we can hear you perfectly. We don't know if you can hear us. Can you hear us?
I can hear you and I have David Albes here, a different speaker, but we're using the same Zoom.
Please proceed.
So if he wanted to make a comment.
Please, yes, three minutes.
Thank you so much, David Albes, Douglas City. I have objection that the public can't make an accurate comment on last-minute changes to the agenda, and that's why procedurally, yes, Mr. Brown, Supervisor Brown has the right to bring something up at a meeting, but not to be voted on at that meeting. It needs to be held and public comment needs to have a chance to review it. So it looks like it's being done improperly. That shouldn't be what the public opinion is at this point in time. So I think in order for transparency, even well, that this should be tabled until the next board meeting when everybody has a chance. Last-minute changes looks a little sneaky. Sorry. Thank you.
Are there anyone else in the public on Zoom, public telephone, or out in the lobby that wishes to weigh in on this matter? Okay, having seen none, I bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Finley?
Just, I believe that this appointment is of the pleasure of the Board or the pleasure of the supervisor, whether the public really likes it or not.
That's correct.
That's the way it goes.
Can you say that again?
Jeremy, what's your choice?
I mean, as I said, I reached out to County Council over the weekend because of this very reason and I was concerned about it. I got the green light to proceed with it, which is why I felt confident in doing this. I have no interest in appearing to be sneaky or last-minute. So if it's the Board's pleasure, I'm happy to push the item back, but I'm not pushing it back to the next meeting. I would request a special board where you can be held tomorrow via Zoom to do the same thing, same applicant. So I'm happy to entertain that and I respect the public's request for transparency. I respect the Supervisor Groves for not wanting last-minute information. Says unintentional. So that's, that's my.
Do you understand possibly, Jeremy, your choice is not voted for, that that's probably the individual I, am I correct? Margaret?
If he brings forward an applicant that's not voted on in favor by the Board, he cannot bring that applicant again. He can bring additional applicants in the future, but he would not be able to re-admit an applicant.
So if you can weigh, Jeremy, if you can weigh where you think your best shot is to move forward, whether it's a special meeting tomorrow or moving it forward today, I'll support you.
As long as I can have the confidence of the Board to have a special meeting tomorrow, I'm perfectly happy proceeding with that methodology.
Or is it possible to have a subsequent today?
According to Margaret, I believe it is also possible to have, it could be a new item brought to the agenda instead of this additional method, but it's going to have the same, the same image in the eyes of the members of the public that have spoken on it. So like I said, I'm happy to have a special meeting tomorrow and I can field questions from the public throughout the day as it is common public information now.
So I have a question. So why can't it be tabled till next meeting?
I mean, there's ongoing planning commission meetings happening.
This Thursday?
So there's this.
There's already been a larger lapse than I intended to have because of some of the procedural things that, you know, honestly seemed like they haven't necessarily been consistent over the last number of years anyways, but.
Because my sense is any commissioner you put up there Thursday night is going to be, it's all new for them for many levels. So I'm not sure that you're going to lose much if you legally don't have to make it a new item, but from a perception standpoint, it would look better if you tabled it to the next meeting unless you can get a special meeting.
So do I have consensus of a special meeting tomorrow via Zoom for this item to be tabled? If not, then I'm going to request some type of motion. Yes, Supervisor Finley?
Special meeting, it would have to be in the afternoon.
Yes.
Given time for.
Yes, possibly.
Okay, you understand that?
If I, I'd say two, just to be, I have a meeting at two, it would have to be much later. Four? Yeah, I think so. We'll check. Okay, Supervisor Finley, are you available via Zoom for a special meeting regarding this item? Supervisor Groves?
I'm checking right.
Supervisor Brown, available?
Yeah.
Tina, would you be able to have this up and posted? Margaret, is there anything I am missing that I should be able to know now from you on this or something?
No, this would be, this would be appropriate for a special meeting. We would just need to have 24 hours notice.
Are you available tomorrow at four or someone representing your firm?
Absolutely.
Dr. Groves, are you available? So we have consensus for four o'clock. I would, I would like to table this for a special meeting at four o'clock tomorrow via Zoom and the public will have access to Mr. McIntosh's application. Agreed?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I want to take your word, right? And you're, that he's no longer and has no interest in that. And I'm fine with that, but the way you worded it to me worried me that that wasn't a large part of the discussion. You say that's the case, Supervisor, I will take your word that that's the case.
I appreciate that. And I'll state that you answered the question in the application, so I don't feel like I have to answer it for him. That is my understanding. I don't feel that I would have gone to the extent of conflicting agree with the FPC just to throw someone in that had his own conflict and jeopardize all that. So I respectfully appreciate your comments and your ability to have a special meeting tomorrow. I respect the comments of the public made and I'm happy to proceed with my question.
Okay, so it's agreed. And it's not a motion, Margaret? I just want to make sure procedurally, I can, I just flat-out table it till tomorrow four o'clock. Public will be notified, correct? No motion?
So I think it's a continued item, correct? You would not, you would just let, you would not vote on it, remove it from the agenda, and then we'd notice it again for a special meeting tomorrow?
Thank you. All right. Item 2.6, Supervisor Morris, adopt a resolution which approves a conflict of interest code for Trinity Public Utilities District. Nope, this will impact.
Yeah, this is mainly an educational piece. Are we supposed to receive these from all special districts?
Yes, as the Board Supervisors is the co-reviewing body. They're assigned with reviewing and approving code of, code, what is it? Code of, code of interest from districts, and that's what this one is. What they've done is they've updated some language regarding their military service, gifts, and personnel policy practices. But yes, it says that the Board Supervisors is, and I'll let Margaret step in because she'll have the legal terminology.
So my further question to that is, is there a mechanism that we're reaching out to all other special districts to do this?
I'd be, yes.
Yeah, okay. Because I just have a total memory lapse that we've done this before. So that was really an educational thing, how often are we going to see these? And I always see a ton of them.
Normally, it's only when they change them that we see them.
Oh.
Where, when they just keep, if they keep them the same year after year after year, it's only then there's a change.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Tina? So we send out a conflict of interest form every two years.
Oh, okay.
And this is our time to send it out this year. And so far, this is the only one we see that that it's listed a change? Most of the time, they just say no change?
Okay.
That's the only time we see them.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Otherwise, if there's no other comments, I would be a chip.
I need to open it up to public comment first. Is there any other supervisors that have anything? Okay. So we're going to move it to the public domain and ask that if anyone from the public wishes to speak on this, now is your time. Ms. Albes?
I apologize, Veronica Kelly Albes, Weaverville, Douglas City, Parks and Rec. I couldn't understand what item number broke up that you guys are discussing.
2.6, the resolution.
Thank you. That's, that's really all I needed to, so I could catch up. Thank you so much.
Closing the public input time, comment, moving it back to the Board. So moved.
Second.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavon?
Aye.
So it's almost 11 o'clock and we have a gentleman that wanted to.
He's supposed to see the officers as soon as he comes on.
Okay, so we're going to go on to reports and announcements. Report from department heads. I'm seeing heads shake for those watching on Zoom. So is there any department heads on Zoom or on the telephone line that would like to call in their report? Okay.
I have a question. Is Shannon on the line?
Ms. White, are you on the line?
Yes, I am on the line.
Supervisor Morris has a question?
Hey, not to put you on the spot, but quick reminder, I know we've had this come up before from the public. And speaking of special districts, special districts, their election was moved to this November, if I have that correct. And so. up before from the public. And speaking of special districts, special districts, their election was moved to this November, if I have that correct. And so what is the deadline for folks wanting to run for any of those special district seats?
I don't have the exact deadline running for me because I wasn't prepared for the question, but I do know that the filing period opens July 13th. And there will be something going out into the next week's newspaper. And we also did put a press release in the paper that'll be coming out tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Because I know there was some confusion, I don't know, six months ago when the state law changed and since it's around the corner, I just thought, yes, great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Yep, no worries. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? And I close the public comment, so bringing it back, item 2.6. We already voted, oh, that's right, then we had to. Okay, reports, we moved on to reports and department heads, sorry, I'm, I'm in the past. Report from Dr. Coons?
Nothing to report this time.
Reports from members of the board, Supervisor Brown?
No out of county travel and nothing major to report.
Supervisor Groves?
Yeah, I should have reported this last time, just for an update. This is getting a little technical, but brown trout captures by the weir on the Trinity River where the group has got permission in Junction City, excuse me, to, to kill brown trouts as they brought them through the weir electroshock them. That has raised a pretty good controversy amongst fishermen and guides. I was requested to try to look into it. I have talked to fish and game, fish and wildlife at a regional level, but this is a decision that seems to have been made out of Sacramento. There is a pretty good group of local guides that are very upset by this action. And it has been tied to our support of looking at brown trout. We passed a resolution to basically support control of brown trout, but this board was looking more at through fisheries and giving incentive to fishermen and to enhance our sport, sport fishing aspect of it. And we were not in support of this, so I want that to be clear. And so if you guys do have to field questions on that, you can send them to me, that's the basic standard. It is out of our control and out of local fishing laws' control.
Thanks for that update. Supervisor Finney? Thank you for being here.
Okay.
Glad to see you and, and I'm glad your presence is remarkable.
Thank you.
No out of county travel.
Supervisor Morris?
Uh, no out of county travel, just constituent call on a lot of COVID, all kinds of levels related questions.
In 1st of July.
And 1st of July, close, yeah. Well, the NorCal EMS has four new part-time staff, three in clinical and one in accounting. And we had the fire chiefs meetings last night and moments before the meeting, there was a fire at the mill, but I'm happy to say it was put out immediately and we were able to have our meeting go mostly uninterrupted. As you heard, there is a lot of interest in the District Three and Five with the hope they have, they've been working on the general plan, I mean, on the Haybrook Valley Community Plan for quite a while. They have a lot of things almost done, a few specifically done and they requested that perhaps we agendaize that, so I will follow up with Dr. Coons. So that concludes my report.
Madam Chair, do you have a quick comment?
Yes, ma'am. I just, it's come to my understanding, of course, everyone knows that fireworks event happened with approval with our county staff and that people were very respectful of the new format of not congregating at the school grounds and people were watching. So that is an important note for their compliance and people were respectful of the new little rule for this year. So thanks to everyone and for the, we were real chambered putting them on.
And the presenter is on the line and he's trying, and he's going to send me the phonetic spelling and pronunciation of his last name.
Okay, so I'll go back and read that item. And Mr. James, I apologize, I had asked for the clarification on how to say your last name and I apologize for not saying that. So when Dr. Coons gets it, I.
Deleese.
Pardon?
Deleese.
Deleese, okay. So item 1.2, presentations. Receive a presentation from James Deleese with Deleese Consulting Services regarding the 2020 strategic plan, no fiscal impact. Welcome.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate you fitting me in toward the end of your meeting. I think we all live on Zoom these days and just finishing one and longing on to the other, so thank you very, very much. Richard, am I able to share my screen? Are you, have you given me permission to share screen?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Tina has it up on the screen if the supervisors want to look, I'll turn on the lights.
Yeah, it is up, thank you.
Okay, okay. I'll put, I'll put some quick slides up in a second. I guess I should kind of tell you at least for 30 seconds a little bit about who I am and sort of where I'm coming from as somebody who might lead you through this process. So very quickly, I have my own consulting practice since the late 90s and I work with executive staffs and elected leadership bodies in areas like strategic planning, a lot of governance work and leadership development. And another significant portion of, of my focus as a consultant is in helping design and facilitate sort of interactive meetings where, sort of trying to work through strategic issues, come to consensus, make decisions. And so sort of the two ends of my business really, I think, complement each other very well with a process like strategic planning needs to be engaging and deliberative and consensus based. My background is originally with professional and trade associations and I think that's probably where ultimately Richard may have found me. But over the years, that's branched out to working with all kinds of nonprofits and public entities as well and even some for-profit companies. So I bring a wide variety of perspectives on organizations that are constituency based and trying to do good things for those constituents and make good decisions, I guess in a nutshell. So that's 30 seconds on me. I will assume that you've certainly read through the concept that I had for your planning process. I'll just highlight a few of the things that will shape perhaps how we view what we could do together and then take any questions and all questions that you have. So I'm going to go ahead and share a couple of slides on the screen. Okay, all right, you should all hopefully see that at this moment. So what are the goals of what we would do together? First of all, I'm suggesting sort of a planning horizon, if you will, of, of the planning kind of timeline that you would actually produce here. And I'm suggesting three years because I think we're in obviously an interesting time where a lot is still unknown. And I'm thinking in three years, we will hopefully be not only on the other side of the pandemic, but probably still feeling the effects of what the, that this interruption in our lives and business has brought us. So I think three years is a doable, feasible timeframe to both think aggressively about the future, but realize we've got factors currently that are still yet evolving. But the goals of the process, obviously, in my point of view, you know, starting outside of the organization, really understanding how your community is changing, what are the trends that are impacting what you do and how you do it, really understanding that and, and talking about the implications of those factors and those trends and where the opportunity is for the county to, to even make a bigger difference for its constituents is a good place to kind of start outside of yourselves. And then build a strong compelling vision for the county into the future and the plan that's required, on the issues that are required to address to achieve that vision. But ultimately produce a document that's usable for you from a governance and management standpoint, so that it's got clear milestones, a shared sense of priority, so that you as a leadership body can monitor and measure this plan and know that you are hitting your mark or that it needs to be adjusted. So really thinking about the ongoing system for planning so that it's a very usable tool for both the board supervisors and for Richard and his team to, to manage the, manage the operation. Okay. So what would you expect from me as a facilitator in this process? Well, and I think this is important for you to know what your, what you can rely on somebody that's coming in from the outside to help you with this. What would I do? Well, first, it's my responsibility and expertise to design a planning process that's going to actually achieve the goals that you want to achieve through this process. So designing the process, a big part of this is having the right information and input at the table so that the planning group has good intelligence to use to make, make good decisions. So I would design a research strategy and support the implementation of that. Obviously facilitate all the planning group discussions, create an environment that allows you to think creatively and critically and strategically about your environment and your operation. So it's my responsibility to kind of create the environment for that. And then obviously pull things together, create the plan document, keep, you know, summarizing our discussion so that you can see how the plan has evolved. So that in a nutshell is what I think any good facilitator will do and certainly what's part of the proposal that I put before you. So how would it possibly work? So I'm envisioning a schedule of sessions that would probably take place over a week or two period. And in a virtual world, I learned quite a bit in the past six months about how to take a process that traditionally has relied on in-person dynamics and make it incredibly interactive and dynamic and valuable when you're not in person. I have, to be honest with you, I have gone kicking and screaming into this virtual world because I get a lot of energy by being on site with a group. But I have learned very quickly how to make the most of this and I have a lot of experience now on doing this kind of a process virtually. And I have to admit, I'll be the first to admit, there's actually some benefits of having to take a process that you would usually cram into a couple of days and really breaking it apart into doable chunks. So I'm suggesting a series of sessions that probably are no longer than a couple of hours in length. That's all, I think doing this kind of thinking, you know, it is, it is exhausting and energizing at the same time, but after two, two and a half hours online, that is probably the limit. So by chunking these sessions, I'll be the first to admit there have been some benefits to that. And, and so what I've learned is when you do a concentrated meeting and then give people time to decompress from it, other thoughts come to mind, other ideas come to mind and letting people see the results of a session and comment on it and think more about it and entertain other questions or gather other data has been extremely useful to the strategic thinking process. So this virtual format really does have some advantages, certainly from that regard and coming up with better, sounder consensus around certain decisions. So what I envision here on the screen is that we would have four distinct sessions that would accomplish a chunk of the work. And you can see the, the plan of action here. I'll draw your attention to a segment three. At this point in the process, we'll be dealing with some of the more specific issues that your plan has to include in order to move toward the bigger vision you have for the county. And so at that point, I have often found it valuable to break up into more work sessions that treat certain issues or groups of issues. So these could be smaller groups that could work through a particular set of issues and get down into specifics of objectives and strategy and approach. And then weave it all back together for the whole group to come back together and look at the entire plan and flesh out, you know, priorities and, and a sense of consensus around the various pieces of the product. I like the subgroup thing not only because it's a different kind of discussion and a smaller group helps, but it's also an opportunity. If you want to involve an expert or involve a deeper layer of staff in the discussion because you're treating specific issues, with subgroups you can do that. So I think it's another flexible tool in a virtual world that you have versus being on site in a, in a single concentrated period of time. So this is sort of a suggested plan of how we would attack the process in some chunked sessions over a period of, of time. Okay. Now, one of the most important things to me in this process is, is not only what you do while you're meeting, but, but frankly, what you do before you meet. And so, you know, if you're going to make decisions from a knowledge-based point of view, then what that means is you have to have data and information and perspective that go takes you outside of your own experience. So you all represent pieces of the community and have a wide range of insight and knowledge and experience on, you know, within the county and that's why you're an ideal planning group. But what, what can we do to bring input from perspectives that you don't have? Or what can we do to bring you information that takes you up above on a higher plane to have you look at best practices in county public entities or information, you know, about trends that you may not be focusing on? So I look at building a document for you before we even meet for the first time that summarizes information and input that will help us have great planning discussions. And to me, it falls into three buckets of information. One is the big external environment, you know, what's going on in the macro world, you know, economic trends, technological trends, political trends, all those things that affect all of us, but that might affect the choices you make as a county. What's going on in your community? How is the profile changing? How are people's needs and expectations changing? So bringing community-based information. What's going on in public entities and rural county entities? What's the best practices in Richard's world and his staff? Excuse me. So it's writing that kind of trend information to the table, again, broadens your perspective. And then research that you're already collecting on some certain county initiatives that I know you're working on, like the cannabis issue and other studies that you're doing that we can pull from too, to bring this external environment information together. The second bucket is your constituents. As, as any community, you have a number of different segments of the community, different constituent groups, different interest groups. So how can we reach out and touch and get perspective from all those that you serve so that you've got that information at the table as well? So thinking again with Richard about what would be some of those groups that we could tap and how would we get their perspective in a productive way so that you could have it as part of the planning discussion? Can't, everybody can't sit at the table, but you can certainly have their thoughts and perspectives at the table. And then finally, the internal bucket, how are we operating as a county? What, what's the participation in our programs and services? What's our financial health? What are the other performance indicators that we should be looking at to get that internal snapshot of how we're doing? And so I'm suggesting some methods about how we would get all this information, a lot of it you already have. And again, we tag into some of the studies and research that you're already doing and fill in the gaps with new, new information where we need it. So craft a research strategy, gather this information and then I would put it together, one single background report that summarizes the key themes, the key emerging issues so that you've got one thing to read and think about before we. so that you've got one thing to read and think about before we meet that really encapsulates a lot of information and data. So that's something that I like to do instead of just throwing, you know, 500 pages of data back at people. I like to take the time to review it and synthesize it into one readable piece so that we can use it all through the sessions and it's really more manageable for you to kind of navigate So I think I tried very much just to do a highlight, but that's sort of a little sense of how I would approach this and maybe some suggestions on how we would do the work. And then clearly the next steps, you know, based on your, go ahead, we would then, you know, confirm the outcomes and the timeline and the logistics, confirm who would be involved in the actual sessions, and then really get to work on the research strategy so that is that's the most time-consuming piece of preparing for a process like this. So you'll find that I love quotes, I love this quote when it comes to strategic planning because so much these days is being done to us and we feel out of control. And I think with this kind of a process, you take charge and you create the future you want and a way to get there. And so I love this quote that "Change is disturbing when done to us, but exhilarating when done by us." And that's the kind of process that I think any group like yours would hopefully want to go through and result in something that excites you and all of your constituents, frankly, in seeing a future for the county that is significant and exciting. So anyway, I'll stop there. Let me take this off the screen and be happy to answer any possible questions I can about the process or how I would move things along. What can I answer for you?
Supervisor Brown, any questions?
No specific questions. I appreciate the opportunity to see the presentation and look forward to the final results.
Supervisor Rose, any questions?
All of us, gentlemen.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris, thank you, as we adjust to the light. Thank you for your presentation. Dr. Coons, do you have anything to add?
No. Well, yes, actually. One of the questions may be how did I settle on this firm? One is I contacted several other firms that knew this and found that they all have a very good sales pitch because they're professional and they're polished and they're ready for a living. So then I backed off and I went to the second route and I contacted my coworkers, my other county administrative officers throughout the county and asked them about. And this firm came back with the highest results and people were at the agencies and the districts of use and we're all very pleased with the results. Tried to do it from more of a perspective of me trying to figure which was the best one, and they all seemed good. So I went to, I went to who had the best results and they came back with the highest ratings from my counterparts.
Well, thank you. And I would ask, sir, that you provide those PowerPoints that you shared with the board to our deputy clerk of the board, Ms. Tina, and that she could put those in the backup for anybody that wants to access them. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Be happy to. Yeah, anytime you have a question, just holler, Richard knows how to get hold of me. Be happy to answer anything.
Looking forward to seeing the start. I'm excited about the perspective. Thank you very much. Yeah, oh, excuse me. Supervisor Brown, say it.
Actually, a question. So what process do you want to forward? Are you going to have other people give us or this is?
I'll take direction from the board if you would like me to reach out to some of the other ones who have their presentation to the board or I can make the recommendation that who I believe is with best suit. And then once that happens in the board, give me direction probably to negotiate some type of timeline and cost. But it's at the board's discretion. This is who I felt at first would represent the county very well, but I could, were to like, bring others forward.
Do you have a follow-up, Supervisor?
Yes. So I was, I guess as a board we have to kind of discuss what we want. I was a little surprised with the three-year process in this.
Yeah.
So.
Because it's a three-year process, the plan is supposed to represent the next three years. The process is going to begin this year and it represents the three-year period where the plan will be implemented and.
Okay, I totally misunderstood.
And Supervisor Brown is correct, it's planned for the next.
Oh, yes, I'm glad you clarified. The plan, the process is not a three-year process, but the plan, the plan you would be producing would cover a three-year future. Yes, thank you. I addressed that question.
I guess I had a very important question.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Supervisor Brown has a follow-up.
I would just be curious if there's any examples from other similar rural entities or counties or cities where we could kind of see how their process rolled out and what the results were of their strategic plan, kind of like a portfolio. Is that something that's possible to be shared?
Yeah, in fact, one of the things, and I won't put the slide back up, but one of the things that I think you should do, and I could again certainly support Richard in doing this, is to get outside of your own, one of the things that gets you outside of your own experience is to look at best practices and trends of similar entities such as yours. So if we could pull a number of rural counties and really do some benchmarking. So I think part of, part of the value of looking outside of yourself is to see how others may have tackled a similar set of circumstances or issues. And we could certainly put that in the bucket of that external environmental piece. And then the other thing I would suggest is that, and I'm sure Richard belongs to and some of you, others of you probably belong to, a number of professional associations such as the Association of Counties that would have best practice data about how counties of your profile have dealt with certain issues. And that's again always useful to see what are others doing that we're not even thinking about or how others approach certain issues. So we could pull from that database as well. So I think it's a great thing just to get you outside of your own experience.
Any follow-up, sir?
No, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, Bobby.
Yes, sir.
Mr. DeLeza, are you still located in the center of the universe, Burbank?
I am here, yes.
Okay, great.
I am isolated here, yes.
Thank you. And your website has some great client lists, so perhaps you'd like to take a look at that, especially Tahiti.
And I gave you in the proposal, particularly because I knew you'd be interested in some of the public entity or public entity representative associations, so then get a sense of the kinds of groups that I've worked with for sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Sir, Richard.
Anything else for me?
No. I'm going to direct the next couple of questions to C E O, Dr. Coons. Do you want to agendaize it so you get formal playbook for the board or what direction are you looking for from us?
Yeah, that would be the next, would be a direction for the board, an agenda, a direction for the board to pursue a plan which the board feels is most appropriate. So if the board have, at that time, at this point, the board can tell me if they want to go a different direction or if they want me to seek something else out before I come back and ask for directions. So I guess that's kind of where it is. I'm the point where I can, I'm seeking direction at the next meeting. However, it may not be the direction the board wants to go, so the board may want more information.
I'm going to just get some, a consensus from the board. Are you comfortable with the choice that Dr. Coons is making? Would you like to see it on the agenda or would you prefer a broader pool of candidates to look at? So that's my question to you. So what would you prefer?
Okay, I see that Richard has done his homework and has come prepared. So thank you, Richard, and I'd like to move forward with this gentleman.
Is that the consensus, the board?
It's my turn.
So you have consensus to move this item to the board on the agenda?
Okay, I'll bring it back to the 21st and I'll discuss with Mr. DeLeza a more defined process that I can do exactly. If it was you.
Okay. So now we're jumping back over. Yes, sir? Was there something? I'm sorry. Did you say something? I'm sorry, Mr. DeLeza.
No, 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 I didn't say anything. I'm good.
I'm off.
All right. So we're moving back onto the agenda.
Okay.
County matters. Am I getting feedback or am I?
No, he's, I think he's just trying to say goodbye.
Okay, goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order. There are two items. There has been a group of people waiting for a long time, so it's the consensus of the board, I'd love to leave them in the order that they're in. Item 5.1, is there a staff here that needs to go? Okay. Can't we do these short little items, 5.2 and 5.3, so staff can leave? Is that the pleasure of the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, they all say 5.4.
Right, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4. So we'll go 5.2 through 5.4 and then do 5.1 last. That's a consensus? Okay. So moving on to 5.2. Discuss Senate Bill 474 regarding very high fire hazard severity zone and give direction to staff. Gentlemen, you weren't in the room. We're going to try to go through the list of items on the county matters quickly because we have staff that needs to get to work. So 5.1 has been moved to the end of the fives. Thank you. So, Dr. Coons. Dr. Coons, you were absent of the room at the time. The consensus of the board is to move from 5.2 through the fives and put 5.1 last because that way our staff can be released. So Keith?
I'll do that.
Keith?
Okay, yes, 5.2. I asked this to be put on. I don't know if the majority of you, I would guess that have seen 474, Senate Bill. I know Jeremy has, he's already missed on RCRCC. The bill quickly basically bans any development in fire hazard zones in the state of California. And I thought it was important that, separate from RCRCC, that we send in or ask RCRCCs to develop a letter where we strongly disagree, yes, sir.
Wouldn't this pretty much shut down Trinity County?
Yes, it would. It would absolutely shut down.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't totally.
Yes. I don't know, it would, it would stop actually any new development and any rehab of old development in Trinity County, personally, I think the whole county.
Not just Trinity County.
Thirty-two counties would be affected drastically.
Yeah, RCRCC was totally opposed, but hasn't been presented. I believe they're, opposition to the letter after having met with one of the authors or supporters of the author. So that lasts a while.
I've been asked for us all to speak more clearly and to our minds, apparently. So Supervisor Morris?
Yeah, CSAC has strongly been opposed to this for the, you know, variety of X amount of counties, and they're opposed to even as amended. So they do not know when the bill will be heard. There's a lot of challenges, I'm told, for it to even move forward. So that's the latest on CSAC, strong opposition.
I just felt that it would be moving us to send in letters to support RCRCC, CSAC, and direct it to all the parties involved separately.
Sure. I think we're in agreement. And so can you work with Dr. Coons and have those letters and then we can sign them?
Yes. And also if you want to give them to us, so I'll send one in on my letterhead.
Yes.
Each of us if we just.
So you'll bring that back to us at the next coordinating?
When?
Yeah.
Not tomorrow, but this.
Yes. Oh, I forgot.
Oh, why?
I wouldn't surprise me, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Moving on to human resources. Modify the department allocation list for Department of Transportation, transportation/roads divisions to be five. Parenthesis five, engineering aid or engineering technician, one, two, three, or engineering aid senior and remove one, one, deputy director of transportation, engineering effective, July 7th, 2020, no impact to the general fund. These allocations remain within the transportations and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, this is Shelley Nelson, H R Director. So I've mentioned the Department of Transportation is requesting approval to modify their allocation list by removing the deputy director of transportation engineering, which is actually just one allocation, and then adding two additional allocations to the engineering series. There are shortfalls ranging from directors at the top of the engineering aides just entering the field. The department's desire is to hire engineering technicians as they are the ones that provide direct support of our engineers that are in office. Their job to take an engineer's design, place it on the plans and in the specifications so that a project could be built. And currently neither of our two current engineers have any of this kind of support, so it makes it very difficult to get projects prepared without some type of consulting assistance and/or to see significant delays in the program delivery. Technicians first represent the most significant assistance in delivering this program, whereas hiring a deputy will only provide more leadership to a group that is significantly short on individuals that can provide production. So that would be the basis of our request.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public on the phone, Zoom, or in person? No hands, so move it back to the board.
Have you moved to approve 5.3 as presented?
I know. Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
No.
Supervisor Chow?
Yes.
Item 5.4, pursuant to Trinity County Code, section 2.60, 410, parentheses A, authorize hiring candidate number 2948238 as a social worker supervisor one, parentheses not master, at range M229, step C in the Health and Human Services Department effective July 1st, 2020. Approximate cost in salary and benefits per month for a social worker supervisor one at A step is $8,495 and at C step is $9,253. So Health and Human Services has been running a continuous recruitment since April, seeking to fill the social worker supervisor one position. You had a vacancy in the child welfare unit. And to date, we've only had one person apply and this applicant scored high among the interview panelists and their references spoke highly of them. The applicant has seven years' experience in juvenile probation, five years' experience in child welfare in California and Washington State, and most of their experience in child welfare is in a rural community similar to Trinity County. The applicant has experience managing family reunification, family maintenance, permanent placement cases. The applicant has worked in emergency response, conducting child abuse neglect investigations, and is currently working as a complaint investigator for facilities with juvenile detention, group homes, foster family agencies, and foster homes. This experience, of course, would be a tremendous asset to this department in serving our community and we're looking to receive the applicant. Any questions from the board supervisors? Opening it up to the public, Zoom, phone, and in public. So.
Second.
I'll close the phone. I'm starting to talk.
Getting hungry.
Yes.
Sorry.
Close and open, first and second. Pull the board. Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead. Would you mind if I just continue? So we're going to go back to item 5.1. Oh, did I skip? Did I miss one? Oh, transportation, I'm sorry, Rick. I had it highlighted. 5.5, adopt a resolution which approves a.
Senator?
Yes.
This could be a long one. I think that I would request we can back onto the public.
I'm fine with that. Is the consensus to go back to 5.1 and allow Mr. Tippett to be pushed back? Consensus? Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so Rick, I apologize. Okay, so Rick, I apologize. I didn't forget you, but you are going to go last after all, and we are going to bring you back. Thank you Supervisor Groves, to item 5.1. Adopt a resolution which calls for a special election to create a cannabis excise and sales tax on certain cannabis activities and approves ballot language and ordinance to be voted on by the people of Trinity County during the November 3, 2020 election. Unknown fiscal impact. And before we get started, Supervisor Brown?
I'm not sure. I'll be accusing from this item. Your personal interest in cannabis cultivation license in Burn Ranch?
Please don't go far.
I'll be outside.
Thank you. Our presenters, get ready. So, gentlemen and members, we are here today looking at item 5.1. And before the gentleman who I've requested explain their cannabis tax proposal for the measure ballot for November, I do want to clarify one thing as a point of order. I want to clear up any misinformation on any involvement that I allegedly have with this cannabis ballot initiative. I received it on Tuesday. I had nothing to do with the structure or the organization or the legal. I had... I was hands-off. So any information provided and circulated within the public claiming that this is my tax proposal is incorrect and invalid. That is why these gentlemen are here before us, because I would not be able to answer your questions. And it is my understanding that their legal counsel that they secure is also available online if we have any questions. Is that accurate? Do you have legal counsel?
Yes, legal counsel is waiting on the phone. Lauren Mendelson should be one of the call-in numbers.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that because I've received information claiming that this is my tax measure, and it is not. So I just felt like that needed to be stated, and I appreciate your patience in this. Thank you. Please proceed. Introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chairperson Jappwick. I appreciate that clarification. Hello, my name is Adrian Keyes. I'm the president of the Trinity County Agriculture Alliance, our county's premier trade association representing licensed cannabis businesses. Thanks for your time today. I'm here with fellow board members John Brower and Ryan Tarbell to introduce our industry-sponsored cannabis business tax with the goal of a vote to place it on the ballot in November. Could you flip the slide up? I'm not sure how to properly request that. Back. A helpful framework to do this tax is to compare it to another highly regulated industry, wine. Although California is known for its high taxes, the excise tax on wine produced here is near the bottom of states nationwide at 44 out of 50. At just 20 cents a gallon, California wine is highly competitive. Our neighbors Oregon is 67 cents a gallon, and Washington at 87 cents a gallon. The structure successfully supported high-quality production and sector stability in California for years, allowing the wine industry to expand and open new revenue streams to development of housing, tourism, and ancillary businesses. Next slide, please. California presently charges a 15% excise tax on recreational cannabis sales along with a cultivation tax of $154.40 a pound for flour, $45.90 a pound on trim, and $21.60 a pound on fresh plant material. And our tax structure mirrors the state in this element. In Oregon, local municipalities are only allowed through voter approval to impose a 3% local sales tax on top of the existing 17% state sales tax. There is no other tax imposed on cultivation or other activities. Washington employs a 37% sales tax, which is, again, the only tax on cannabis products. Oregon is meeting its revenue expectations through their scheme. Washington is exceeding them. California's fallen short, even though our rates are potentially higher once you add in all the local taxes that can be assessed in California. Overtaxation is stifling the regulated market and encourages cannabis to be grown, sold, and consumed illicitly without the rigorous environmental and public health regulation imposed on other licensed businesses. Next slide. Closer to home, our neighbors have either a square foot or percentage grocery receipts tax. Humboldt County's tax is imposed only on the square foot actually under cultivation, not the maximum potential or license type, and is paid for the prior year, not the upcoming. Mendocino uses a 2.5% grocery receipts tax or 50 cents a square foot of cultivation actually under cultivation, whichever is greater. Also note, you can see on here that a lot of municipalities don't charge any ancillary business taxes on anything other than cultivation. In fact, our county in Eureka don't charge any tax on cultivation either, although they're indoor. And also, both Mendocino and Humboldt have equity programs tied into tax, which in part support or are supported by the tax and makes available state grant funding for economic resilience. So those are benefits of these tax schemes that actually support the industry and the local communities. Our industry developed and supported tax proposals will generate sustainable, long-term revenue for the county's general fund and support the small compliant farms for whom this program is originally developed. Please vote to put our proposal on the November ballot, and a lot of the people of Trinity County have been making a decision. Thank you for your time, and I'll pass the mic to John.
Good day, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Staff. My name is John Brower, and we've been having these conversations for years now. Supervisors Jappwick and Finley convened an ad hoc committee to study this years ago. And Supervisor Groves has helped educate us to alcohol and other commodity tax schemes over the years. And as our county has wrestled with transitioning of our cannabis industry toward licensure, this hasn't come up until now, but, you know, through the encouragement of Mr. Finley's and last year and the other competing tax measure now, our industry has finally brought something to the table, and it has very broad support from within the industry and is a little different than some of the other tax schemes in other areas. But it is very, very similar to how alcohol is taxed to the great benefit of small, high-quality producers and also is set up very, very similar to how the state has chosen to tax cannabis in California. The... I'd like to read some of our findings in the ordinance. And one of the most important ones is, "Whereas in 2019, the California State Legislative Analyst Office recommended lowering state cannabis tax rates to achieve the goals of undercutting the illicit market and discouraging use by persons younger than 21 years of age." Another really important piece of legislation that's pending right now in our state legislature is AB 1948. And it's seeking a temporary three-year suspension of state cannabis cultivation tax and a reduction of state cannabis excise tax from 15 to 11% to prevent illegal production or distribution of cannabis, to reduce barriers to entry into the legal market, to tax the growth and sale of cannabis in a way that drives out the illicit market for cannabis and discourages use by minors and abuse. And importantly, this bill finds that the cumulative tax rate imposed by existing law is substantial and undermines the legal regulatory system if high taxes cause prices to far exceed those that are found on the illicit market.
John, could you just take a pause? I want to check in with our Ms. Tina. Do we have... Did we lose?
I'm trying to share it.
Yeah, I'm trying to share. The presentation is not coming through.
I'm sorry for that interruption. I apologize. So if you can make these slides available after your presentation to Tina, then the people that are waiting to see it, because we're not... We're having a technical, and I apologize.
That's fine. At what point did you lose me? I could start over.
I don't know, because I just could see the panic on... Go ahead. Go ahead. Right where you are.
Can the Zoom audience hear what I've been saying? Yes, I could see the presentation.
They just couldn't see your slides.
Oh, thank you.
I haven't adjusted.
So, again, the bonus bill finds that the cumulative tax rate imposed by existing law is substantial and undermines the legal regulatory system if high taxes cause prices to far exceed those that are found on the illicit market. And this is really important. This is something that should be near and dear to all of our hearts, that especially the board members have worked so hard to help make this happen here in Trinity. And that is that it is detrimental to the citizens and natural environment of Trinity County to implement a commercial tax that cannot be sustained by our county licensees. If licensees are forced out of business by an onerous tax, the corresponding drop in general fund revenue from lower property taxes and local sales and use tax could be substantial, reducing the county's ability to meet its financial obligations. And that leads us to all of our research, all of our conversations with other similar industries, are getting educated by Supervisor Groves, has led us to finding that the type of commercial cannabis tax cultivation that brings the most benefit to the people of Trinity County and best protects the quality of our natural environment is found to have three essential components. It must be production-based, flat-rate, and tiered. And the production-based is just like the alcohol industry, where the producer is taxed on the actual product produced and transferred into the supply chain instead of being taxed on the potential for production. In the world of commodities production, this is the only sustainable tax for commodity producers. It's been well-proven time and time again in other economies. The second essential component is flat rate. It's very, very important that this commodity be taxed at a flat rate that protects Trinity's high-quality production and helps avoid overproduction. When taxed at other than flat rates, commodities producers almost always overproduce and tank their own market. We can avoid that here by being thoughtful about this now. And then tiered. The tiering of a cultivation tax progressively, just like income tax and alcohol tax, to protect smaller producers and licensees that might be suffering a crop loss or having a low production here. Just like wine producers that are taxed a given amount, say X, up to their first 250 gallons produced and transferred to distributor. But at 250,001 gallons of production, those producers are taxed at X plus Y. And it helps protect the smaller, higher-quality producers. And that is absolutely what we're trying to design here in our local program. It really brings the broadest benefit to the county. If you have further questions about the three essential components, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'm going to hand off to Ryan Tarbell now. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm going to discuss a few of the specifics of our tax very briefly. So this proposed tax measure would place a 2.5% annual gross sales tax on storefront and non-storefront retail activities. And this would be due to the tax collector in four installments each year, quarterly installments. It would also impose a production-based, flat-rate, tiered cultivation tax on commercial cannabis grown in the county, and this would be due in two installments each year. This is based on metric transfers, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a couple of slides. So metric transfers, January through June, would be due December 10. And then metric transfers, July through December, would be due the following year on April 10. Next slide, please. So the cultivation tax rates would be $15.44 per pound for cannabis flowers, $4.59 per pound for cannabis leaves, and $2.16 per pound for fresh cannabis plant. These values would be considered the full rate, and then it would be tiered. The first 0 to 100 pounds transferred would be taxed at 25% of the full rate. 100 to 400 pounds would be taxed at 50% of the full rate. 400 to 1,000 pounds would be taxed at 75% of the full rate. And then greater than 1,000 pounds would be taxed at the full rate. And the tiering would be based upon the poundage each county licensee cumulative transfers by all the cultivation licenses that that entity holds. And it would be based per calendar year. So the next year, the tiering would be reset. Next slide, please. So the tax will be calculated on metric transfer reports. And these reports can calculate the cannabis material transferred by each category, flower, leaf, and fresh cannabis plant. And our tax measure would grant the tax collector authority to verify metric reports through a memorandum of understanding with the California Department of Food and Agriculture. The graphic on the right, this is my metric account. It shows the reports control panel in metric and basically shows how each cultivator would generate this report. You can enter the dates. You can enter the item category, flower, leaf, or fresh cannabis plant material, and generate a PDF. And then you would do that for each cannabis category, flower, leaf, and fresh cannabis plant. And that would be remitted along with the tax to the tax collector. And then the tax collector would be able to come into metric and independently verify this for each cultivator if they suspected fraud. Thank you very much. I would like to briefly let our legal counsel, who worked very closely with us drafting this proposed tax measure, add any additional comments that she has. Lauren Mendelson, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. You know, thank you, Supervisors, and Staff. I am Lauren Mendelson. I am the attorney who assisted Trinity County Agriculture Alliance with crafting this measure. I specialize in cannabis policy and relationships around California. I work in firms called the offices of Almiron, Cinderella, and Stilman County. Cannabis businesses that can serve as a valuable source of tax revenue, which the county can use to offset other costs in difficult times like these, or things such as the COVID-19 pandemic. The point is that we look towards, you know, new sources of revenue for the county. So PCAA's goal with this particular measure was to craft a policy that would be sustainable in terms of allowing the legal cannabis industry to realistically exist and thrive in Trinity County. And also one that addresses the current national calls for social justice equity. As you may, Governor Nissen declared that the cannabis industry is an essential business that's the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. And therefore, it's important that the county do what it can to help these essential businesses continue to serve their communities. And it's important to serve their communities not just by providing products, like medicine that a lot of folks use to help them get through the day, but also creating jobs, so we can lead the local economy other ways. At PCAA, this measure that's before you addresses the needs of both the cannabis industry and the broader Trinity County community. But it also watches to be a fair process and, you know, let the voters decide what type of cannabis taxes that's for voters in Trinity County. You know, please let me know if the board, county council, any of our county staff have any questions regarding your proposed measure. You should have my address, but if you don't, then PCAA can provide that for you. And I will be on the call, you know, to get the... will be on the call, you know, to address the items listening in if you have any questions. And thank you very much for your time and your consideration on this coordinating issue.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, I'm going to request that you sit to decide. We have a plethora of people that were outside, and for COVID reasons, I will ask at this time that you mask up, and we're going to invite the public comment as soon as the supervisors have any questions to you. But I would appreciate that if you could remain. While the public speaks, if there's a question that the public brings up that a supervisor wishes to address, they will request it from you. Do you have any questions on what I've just said? Okay. Supervisors, are there any questions to present? I have some technical questions, but all I can go first.
What's the estimated revenue source out of this? I mean, that sourced amount?
I can answer that from having done.
Please take, so our Zoom and everybody else unmasked is talking to them. Thank you.
Yeah, well, that's always going to be something of an unknown, but I have done the math. In a fully operated program, I think you can expect between $3 and $4 million a year.
Fully operating means all 530 license.
530, yeah. It's difficult to break the numbers out. The data that I have is probably six months old for the license type, so instead of relying explicitly on that, knowing that we are going to have those licenses filled really shortly, I just went ahead and did it with the full program.
So, the question of the fraud, he was showing a picture of, I assume that's the track and trace metrics, but it really doesn't, it only covers what goes into track and trace. No one's true, I'm sure, but there are a lot of groups that kind of play both sides to the middle, and we hope over that time period that dwindles down. But have you taken that metrics into account at all?
There is just no numbers available for that. Metric's a pretty stringent system, and we are actually receiving inspections fairly regularly, and metric and CDFA can both request your data. They're using numbers, they're generic across the board essentially, and if your farm is reporting less than it should be, they'll come check you out. Metric is the system California decided to use for this type of enforcement. It's the best one in the nation. They're operating in Colorado, so I would, I mean, theoretically, we could ask somebody in Colorado how they feel about it and exactly see, but it's the system that we have, and it's rigorous, and there's always going to be cheaters in every industry. I mean, you work for a winery that got raided by the ATF, so it's certainly across the board. People try and avoid taxes as best they can, and they can do it illegally, or they can do it legally. That's, as a licensed cultivator, my concern is with licensed cultivators and people being compliant, I would expect anybody who's cheating to weed it out pretty quick.
For the record, I didn't work for them.
Supervisor Finley has to follow up.
Follow up with Keith. Who enforces metric?
BCC, CDFA, and Department of Public Health. CDFA has already suspended at least seven Trinity County cultivation licenses for lack of metric compliance in the last month alone, and they have stopped extending the deadlines for people to be 100% metric compliant, and they're now in enforcement mode on that.
And how do we know that?
Just because they have a county permit. Oh, it's a state license that CDFA enforces.
And they have their state license, do they necessarily have to be participating in the enforcement claim now?
No, 100%, and the CDFA compliance and enforcement staff, which are many now, they are constantly confirming compliance of their licensees within the backend of metric.
And if you say that you're not growing this year or producing, that's okay, correct?
No, you would still be getting your metric inspected, and it would still be getting flagged for noncompliance if you were noncompliant. You'd still be getting site inspections.
By whom?
CDFA. Who has dozens and dozens of inspectors statewide now. They've got a large compliance and enforcement staff for the Emerald Triangle Counties, and they even have inspectors specifically focused on Trinity County that are focused here. And they've been doing noticed inspections.
A lot of dirt roads to follow up on.
And unnoticed inspections, where they're rolling up to people's gates unannounced, and doing snap inspections. They're serious about this.
How many of the county licenses have state licenses? Do we have that number? The last time I looked, it was about half.
I think it's closer to maybe 75, 80, 90% now, and I think the, as far as I know.
Well, this only, we only get the revenue from state licenses.
Right.
So, people in the county.
And they wouldn't be applying with metric because they wouldn't have a state license.
Right, but they would be legal hire accounting.
The first two years of state licensing, there was a minimum six to eight-month lag between providing CDFA with a completed application, including our local authorization, and actually getting issued a state license. They've got that down to about maybe a one, two-month lag right now, and people are bringing airtight applications to the state, again, with local authorization in place, as fast as a week or two in some cases. So, they really stepped it up.
Supervisor Moore.
I would just add on that state licensing. Our ordinance requires folks within 90 days to apply in the process for the state license, so it is on also the county to follow up on those licenses who are not registering with the state.
And they have been. They have been, especially under more recent times that the state is getting caught up on their backlog, the county is enforcing on that also.
And then I have a question that was just a follow-up to their conversation. So, why have we not, why is it not listed or included taxation on the other license? Manufacturing, distribution?
Oh, there's no other precedent for a sustainable tax on any other commodity-producing industry to hit the other supply chain partners. We're seeing about 200 less state-licensed retailers in business today than a year ago in the state of California, and it's in the high-tax locations that we're watching them fall out of the industry. It just can't compete against the lower-tax jurisdictions nearby, and plus, if you tax these other supply chain partners up and down the supply chain, those costs get compounded up and down the supply chain and are ultimately paid by the consumer, and the California consumer is a very educated cannabis consumer, and they also have access to many different sources, and we want to encourage them to source their product through the licensed, regulated supply chain with a livable tax.
Supervisor Finley.
One thing I was a little disappointed in is there's nothing in here that will stop this border, future ports, from discontinuing the lower-growing licenses, the lower-producing tax-performing licenses, so we could very easily just chop off the smaller farmers.
Yeah, we include our tiering in a way that we feel best protects the smallest, mom-and-pop legacy producers.
What if there's no licensing? We change permitting so there's no permits issue for those areas?
It would be contrary to the spirit of our program, I think we all feel.
So, it's spirit and.
But I think most of us are hopeful that we would continue to see small specialty and specialty cottage producers have a chance in this market.
John, I do have a couple things I want to ask you, but I.
I'm sure, can I?
Yes, please.
So, you chose not to tax illegal growths?
Yeah, we don't really think that's in the purview of our trade group. We don't think it's possibly illegal. The Marijuana Tax Act of 1937 was beat in the Supreme Court, I believe, in the early 1970s for trying to tax something that was illegal. Mendocino County had a, what was referred to as a pay-to-play program about five, six years ago, where they were attempting to tax unlicensed cannabis operators, and it quickly got the interest of the state attorney general and, I believe, the Department of Justice. It's not really something that the licensed community, you know, feels is a top priority or could possibly be illegal. What we're talking about is a sustainable way for the licensed cannabis community to contribute to the benefit of the citizens and natural environment of Trinity County in the most sustainable way possible.
Boy, if it was me, I would really think that I would want to have my competitors taxed at at least the same rate or a higher rate than I.
The county's certainly welcome to do that. I think one of the things we're hopeful for is that Board of Supervisors, in your wisdom and sense of fairness, would place all, any and all proposed cannabis tax measures on ballot. It's going to be a big election this year. I think it's the moment to bring these benefits to Trinity County from this industry that already exists here, and again, we have thousands of producers in the county, hundreds of whom are now licensed, and I think many more are eager to participate in the regulated side of the industry if they can make the numbers work. And that's our goal, is to transition our legacy industry, traditional industry, into the regulated marketplace, and really bring benefit to the county from this thing that has existed here for a long time.
I'm not sure who this is directed to, but I do see our tax collector in, Ms. Terry, and I would like you to think about, if you have any questions for these gentlemen while I'm asking a couple of questions, I want you to feel free to engage in this conversation. So, my question to you is, are you the only cannabis organization in the county at this time?
I believe so. There's been several other attempts to organize the community of licensees. There was an organization that helped work with the folks that became Trinity Action Association and our Environmental Group State a few years ago, that helped come to the grand compromises that you all worked so hard on too, to help bring our urgency ordinance and our permanent ordinances, and while imperfect, I think most would agree that the program is mostly working, and it does need some massaging here and there, but I think it's mostly working. And so, Trinity County Agricultural Alliance is comprised of members of previous organizing attempts, and we feel like we represent the interests of not just the licensees, but the community generally, but our specific mission is to represent the cannabis professionals of Trinity County and to bring the broadest benefit to Trinity County as a whole from our industry's activities.
So, could you give us an idea approximately how many member cannabis farms you represent, and if there's any consulting groups, how many of them? I'm not asking for names, and I'm trying to be, you know, nosy. I just want to understand how big or little your group is.
We're at about 75 member farms at this point. We only farmed up, farmed up last August. We've been bringing on another little four, five, or six per month pretty steadily. We've got the major player cannabis consultants are members and active. We have a membership tier for ancillary, other-than-cannabis businesses that's getting some good interest, and other businesses, but we're at about 70, 75 farm members now.
And multiple consultants?
Yeah, who are, who definitely bring expertise and wherewithal, because they're, you know, constantly working with the regulatory community and, you know, really pushing hard to make this transition and get folks environmentally compliant, and then through the county licensing program, and then through the state, and then working hard to help licensees operate in a compliant way once they've achieved that state licensing. That was really just a dream just a couple of years ago, but it's a reality now, and it's exciting.
Thank you. Supervisor Finley.
Well, two to four weeks ago, Humboldt Board of Supervisors were, it was their time that they were given the option to positively lower or raise, perfectly lower their tax rate on cannabis, and they chose just not to acknowledge it, not to deal with it.
Yeah, I believe they continued the item, but about a year ago, Humboldt County was put in a situation where many of their licensees were unable to pony up for their square-footage-based tax.
The impression you got was that they're really not planning on altering their tax at all. They just wonderful supervisors over there. They like the way it is.
Humboldt County varies drastically from Trinity County in that Humboldt has many multi-acre, large operations, very few mom-and-pops made it into their program, and Trinity is unique, and that we still have a lot of farmer-owned farms. San Barbara County, no. Salinas, no. Monterey, no. Humboldt, no. Mendo, Humboldt, or sorry, Mendo, Trinity, to a lesser extent, Nevada County, still has a lot of tiny, little mom-and-pop operations, and if the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors feels like their $1 per square foot, $2 per square foot, or $3 per square foot is sustainable, that has yet to be seen. They've lost a lot of participation in their program over the last three years. There's less licenses there now than there was a year ago.
Okay.
And a year ago, Humboldt County did push off the payment of their square-footage tax for cultivators to the following year because their licensees couldn't swing it at that time, because money was not there.
And it's still not there.
It is yet to be seen if that is a sustainable tax. I believe it is not.
Why bother, even bother with taxation?
Well, the cannabis community in Trinity is thankful for the opportunity to get a local permit and operate in a compliant way, and we really want to bring, we really want to contribute to the county generally, but it must be in a sustainable way, much like alcohol.
Ms. Terry.
John, I interrupted you when you were about to say something. Did you have an announcement?
Ms. Terry, was there any clarification or any information that these gentlemen could provide for you today?
I do have some, like, a couple procedural things, and then the dates, and you pick the dates for, that match the property taxes. I've found that that's been a problem for other entities that are trying to match our date because it confuses the public.
Yeah, I think we're eager to work with you in any ways possible to make this, to help you with workflow and logistics and make this easy to implement and manage your department on. I think we're flexible on things like that, and would love your input into ways we can make it easy and cost-effective for you to implement.
Keep in mind that it's possible for the Board of Supervisors to alter some of these issues that aren't necessarily actually, I think. Margaret could weigh in on that, to make it a little bit easier for it to function.
And that's our hope. That's why we're bringing this really to you guys first. I mean, A, we're up against this timeline.
It doesn't need to be changed today. It could be changed after it would be passed.
Correct, correct, and we're eager that that could happen, and there's a lot of wisdom in the room here, and, you know, we haven't shocked this around the community broadly or done a bunch of advertising or anything like that before bringing it to you all. We're eager for your input.
Is that the only thing, Ms. Terry?
For now, I have a lot of questions, but yeah, we can touch base.
And our legal counsel, Lauren Mendelson, is also very willing and eager to work through any of the mechanics and the technical issues.
Okay, so at this time, I don't believe there's any more questions or clarifications from the board, so we will be opening it up to the public. I have received a few letters. I think what I'll do is I'm going to try to find them that I was asked to read into the record. So we're going to start with the public comment. And we have requested that people in the public, only two people come in at a time. And when the first person exits, then the third person can come in. So there's no more than two. When you come up to the podium, please take your mask off so we can understand you, but you wear the mask into the room. And as soon as the people in the public, and we're starting with them just so the Zoom people understand, they've been standing outside in the heat. And so we want to give them an opportunity to refresh themselves quickly. So we're opening to public comment now. So when you come to the podium, there is disinfectant. If you feel that you need to wipe it down for any reason, but when you speak to the board, please take your mask off and so we can hear you and speak directly into the microphone so people on Zoom and phone can hear you. Thank you. Welcome to the podium. Please take your name to the record.
My name is Rob Wallace. I own operating from mountain farms outside of Weaverville. I want to first thank everyone for giving their time and every in this manner. It's a big deal. People have got their own lives. Basically, I want to say, you know, we're not opposed to having to tax something that ended up on us. Do you feel that we want to be part of the community? We're not saying. And really just want to find out something that's affordable, something that's fair, something that everyone can operate on a free basis off. So just like this also, if you give us more time to thought and really be allowed that the public have an understanding and have more of a saying input and hear more about this as well. So yeah, there's a lot to say other than that. I just wanted to have a fair shot for everyone to voice their opinion, voice, understand what we're having to say as well. And I appreciate everyone's time in the matter.
Hello, my name is Kaz Wuzneski. I'm the owner of Mountain View Oasis. We are a licensed cannabis farm in Junction City. And I would also just like to take this chance to say thank you to all the supervisors for helping to create this ordinance for us to all participate in. And I know it's been a long and it's sometimes difficult process to work through. And so I'm happy to be able to participate in this process. As a cannabis farmer, I definitely feel that a tax initiative is an appropriate thing. I'm in full support of Trinity County being able to benefit from the hard work that we are all constantly doing on our farms. And I think having a fair way to assess those taxes is a very important thing to build sustainability and symbiosis amongst the county and the people participating in the program. I think, you know, having a chance for any of the initiatives to be on the ballot would be great because it gives the people a chance to decide for themselves what they may or may not want in that. And, you know, I just, like I said, I think it's all about finding the common ground and the way to assess these taxes in a fair manner that takes all things into account, not just, you know, specific number or something like that. So I just want to say thank you for letting me speak my mind and appreciate you guys for all your hard work towards this ordinance and looking forward to, you know, getting a good, proper tax initiative on there so everyone can benefit. So, thank you.
Thanks.
I can take the thought, right?
Yes, sir. Take it off and if you want, there's disinfectant, so you can.
Okay. My name is Matt Jefferson. I own Trinity Alps Cannacraft. I'm a permitted cultivator in Trinity County. I support a reasonable county tax on the cannabis industry. I've seen a few different tax proposals in the last few years. I believe that the TCAA tax proposal is the most sustainable model for our industry and for our county. I believe that a production-based tax is the best model for our small farms in Trinity County. And it gives us the best opportunity for all our farmers to succeed and in turn providing sustainable revenue for our county. I'm not a great speaker.
That's right.
Just like kind of my points on the opposing tax bill, a big thing that would be very burdensome on me is that there's a $10,000 flat fee put on self-transportation transportation. That's a very difficult thing for me to be able to do. On the flat rate fees on a small outdoor, they're saying I'm going to produce like 266 pounds to get to the $4,000 minimum. That's pretty realistic. Sixteen hundred pounds on a mixed light is not realistic. I have friends in Humboldt County that are growing an acre, they're pulling down 2,500 pounds. To put in, to say that a 10,000 square foot mixed light farm is going to produce 1,600 pounds is just unrealistic. I support the TCAA tax because I believe it's written by experienced people in the industry that have knowledge in the industry that have been a part of it. And I think that they can bring more knowledge into it. I believe a reasonable tax will help pave the road to compliance and economic stability in Trinity County. So I urge the board to go towards the TCAA tax, I think would be the right way to say it. And thank you guys for your time and all the work you've done and everything in this. It's about all I got.
Thanks, Matt.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Next gentleman, come on up. And when you talk, go ahead and take it off.
Want to get the microphone?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is William Tappan. I'm from Weaverville, California, and I'm Trinity Soul Room. I'm speaking here today to advocate for the TCAA tax proposal. I feel it was written by people in the industry that understand the industry and it will ultimately be the best in the long run for this community as well as this industry. I also would like to speak to counter-tax measures that are out there that I find to be more of a punitive issue or punitive measures than a sustainable tax. My wife and I run a 10,000 square foot mixed light farm by ourselves. It's very difficult, time-consuming. We all serve three years into our county program here at a fully state license. The countermeasure out there would impose a $30,000 tax by the county on us on top of the $12,000 a year I pay the state and add county sales tax on top of the other sales tax. To me, that measure or that initiative is aimed at basically dismantling the licensing program here, which has been the goal of the people that have been drafting the counter-tax measure. I find it to be a little spiteful and also non-sustainable. A $30,000 tax to people with my license, a mom and pop husband and wife team, would essentially put us out of business. And that's the goal, it seems like to me. And once you have all the licensed farms out of business, where does that tax revenue come from all of a sudden? It's gone. And what are you left with? A black market only, more crime, non-taxable revenue by the licensed farmer, the good actors. I've jumped through every hoop ass of me. I welcome any law enforcement to my property right now at any time. We're not the bad guys here. And I feel like the countermeasure is trying to take us down. And I just don't think that's fair or in good faith, to be honest with you. So I feel that the TCAA measure is the best one. And I would encourage the board to please put on a ballot, let the citizens of this community decide for themselves what they think about it. Otherwise, you're just going to be back to the black market, cannabis isn't going to go away, and it's going to be unregulated, no environmental oversight, no taxes. That's what's going to happen unless we give a fair measure, tax measure, which I believe the TCAA measure is. And I would encourage the board, thankfully, hopefully, to put it on the November ballot and let the citizens of this county decide for themselves. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, William. A little housekeeping.
Yes.
Were you the William that was on Zoom earlier that was waiting to speak on this?
No, I think our Zoom handle is the Farm Trinity Soul Room.
Okay, thank you. Somebody named William wanted to know when his name might be used.
No, I believe our Zoom account is under the Farm name. Thank you for asking.
John Lett and Douglas Citi, just to note, the that initiative provides for the board, gives the board the power to reduce any of the maximums and minimums in that tax. This, what we're here to talk about today was put on the agenda five o'clock by the up there last Thursday by the board, or rather by the chair. And I question whether the rest of you board members should give serious consideration to what's been brought before you. The records show that the chair was, her Hayfork property was ostensibly sold to Family Trees LLC for a million and a half, which was all paper. And of that amount, of course, nothing was paid down by Family Trees. $900,000 was loaned by a guy from Santa Ana. $600,000 was seller-fananced by the Chadwicks on a second. Then later, they loaned another $300,000, according to the record. So they're sitting there with seconds and thirds on the family farms operation in Hayfork. Bill Chadwick Incorporated, a construction company called Villa Pacific Contractors a long time ago. Recent statements show that a guy named Brad Gilbert is CEO of that company. Mr. Gilbert is the person who set up Family Trees LLC shortly before Family Trees made the so-called purchase from the Chadwicks, precozy. It looks like Chadwicks and Gilbert have been doing business together for a long time. One thing for sure, according to the records, the success or failure of that cultivation business will be will determine if the Chadwicks are paid a lot of money and that amounts to a conflict of interest. I don't think you should participate in this knowing that information. But there's more. On the Water Board records show that the supervisor initially enrolled that property with the Water Board and the Water Board had Barbara Chadwick listed as the owner-operator of Family Trees LLC up until January, April last year. Can a supervisor ethically and legally bring this ill-conceived watered-down grower-dictated proposal before the board? Somehow, the supervisor has previously justified some votes, but are pretty questionable. One was her vote that kept off the ballot, a tax proposal written by Tom Polanco and brought forward by Supervisor Finley in 2017. The other one was the vote that killed the extension of the urgency ordinance. You should get out of the business of participating in votes like that. I urge you to seriously consider whether you want to have anything to do with this shady charade. I think I know what a neutral observer would say about it, like a horse. Thank you.
Paul Hoosier, appreciate the opportunity. I'm here, I am part of the Coalition Fraction of Local Finances and the group that is collecting signatures to put a cannabis tax on the ballot, it certainly appears that this is a last-minute effort to confuse voters. I mean, the cannabis industry has had years to bring forward a tax. They're only doing so now at this time. I'd like to dispute some of the estimates. You know, the estimate of three or four million dollars is far in excess of what the tax proposed to you now would bring in. It's certainly well less than $2 million. And the way the current measure is written may have some legal issues because it is written such that if there are any conflicts between two measures that pass, that this measure prevails. So you could have a scenario where this proposed measure gets 50% plus one vote, the CAF measure gets 60% of the vote, and yet the provisions in this measure pass. We have some questions about the legality of that. There are some glaring fatal flaws in this proposal. The biggest one, I think a couple of the supervisors pointed out, is there is no tax, no penalty on illegal cultivation. It's it's a glaring omission in this provision. And you and we hear that we think it may be illegal to tax illegal grows. We don't think that's the case. And even if there is, our tax has a severability clause so that if any portion of this now is not to be legal, the rest of it stands. There's certainly no risk in going forward with it. I did mention, I think that the CAF tax, we think with today's level of campus activity to bring in four million dollars to the county, we recognize that things change over time. The Board of Supervisors has every ability to lower that tax rate at any time in the future. So these complaints about putting us out of business, certainly you're in control of that. So we we see that, we don't see that as an issue. The other major flaw of the proposal before you now is there's no inflation adjuster, you know, a consumer price index tie. So that over time, these already very low rates proposed will become meaningless. You know, one example is you're getting a payment in lieu of taxes for the for the value of the ground underneath Trinity Lake. You're getting the value in 1955 tax or value rates. You don't want to set yourself up for the same thing with this over time. If this were to pass and prevail with no inflation adjuster, it becomes meaningless. And, you know, I guess the last thing I I'd mention is why weren't others have an opportunity to put something on your agenda and propose ours with a presentation as well? Thank you for your time.
Paul? I have a question. We're allowed to ask a question, right? Not during public comment. We don't usually. On an item, we do.
It's an item.
Yeah, it's an item, we do.
Are we here to think?
Well, I asked him, so I'm not guessing.
Great, you won't give them that.
Right, so. So you mentioned the illegal grow taxation and and that is in your proposed measure.
Yes.
And it was kind of, our two supervisors brought something to us two weeks ago before it was pulled off and it included that. I didn't have the ability to ask the question then. So how does that mechanism work? They're not going to be tied into metric, you know, how does that, how do you see that working?
So the idea is it creates a strong inducement to bring illegal activity into the white market, into the legal world. But the way it would effectively work is when you caught those illegal grows, you would impose that tax on them. If they don't pay, you potentially lien the county, I mean lien the property in the same way that you do if someone doesn't pay their property taxes.
So they would have to be enforced upon first?
Yes.
Then, okay, that was my.
But with with four million in additional revenue, more enforcement capability, you build a virtuous cycle to bring folks from the illegal into the legal side.
It's the way we do it with our code enforcement, that the program pays for half million dollars roughly to use code enforcement on those illegal sites and they're fined as well.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my.
Just like to remind Chair Chadwick that we are dealing with this one proposal, this one measure instead of, we're getting off topic here talking about.
Thank you.
I understand and I agree with you, but.
I wanted to clarify.
I know you want to.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dana from Hayfork. Thank you, supervisors and staff for being here. I know that a lot of people have put in their hard work into the ordinance. And I myself was schooled by Keith Groves with the type of tax that TCA put together a few months back before we officially organized ourselves. Vote yes to put this on the ballot for the community to vote on is a vote to support the cannabis industry, just like the ordinance that everyone's worked so hard on. A vote no to put it on the ballot is a vote in support. A vote no to put it on the ballot is a vote in support of the shitshow that's been going on over these years. That gentleman asked.
I'm going to ask you to rethink from any person this time.
Okay, thank you. I will, I promise. That gentleman asked why we don't include a tax against illegal producers, when that whole concept doesn't jive with me. Why hasn't Trinity County produced a tax against illicit growers in the past? It doesn't really fold together in reality. That isn't my job as a licensed producer, isn't to tax illegal growers, isn't to call them in, that's law enforcement's job. I am busy running my business, trying to benefit my community through all of my participation in community service. If we want something to thrive and be sustainable, we need something with industry support. This was brought forth through so many painful hours with brilliant minds to present, and we already know we're at a disadvantage. We're not retired, we're not judges, and we're not lawyers. I would love the opportunity to advocate for this measure on the ballot. I would love the opportunity to register hundreds of people to vote. I would love the opportunity to vote yes on this measure on the ballot. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gina Tappin, and my husband and I own and operate Trinity Solar Ground, fully state and county licensed farm right here in Leaverville. I'd like to give my appreciation to the board for hearing comments today and for working so hard to have created a compliance program within Trinity County. My husband and I have been able to realize our dreams of owning and operating a legal cannabis farm here, make an honest living, and provide for our children. I also want to send appreciation to all of the other licensed cannabis farmers that are here in Trinity, all of whom are very committed to their land, their family, and committed to this county. We all want to be active members of this county and have a positive impact on its present and future. For this reason, a tax bill's been presented to you that's fair to both the hard-working cultivators and the hard-working people of Trinity County. We have a true desire to give back to this county that's allowed us all to do what we've set out to do, but we can't go bankrupt in the process or we'll have nothing to give. Please allow voters to hear our voices in November, allow them to see that we collectively have a tax plan that is fair to cultivators and their communities alike, and please allow this plan presented to you today to be on the November ballot and let the people of Trinity County decide. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dietrich Brower, thank you for your time today, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak on this matter. You've all put a tremendous amount of work into the current cannabis program for years. Some of it, I hope, has been fun and enjoyable, and I'm sure a lot of it has been all the heartache. The competing measure that is gathering signatures right now by TAA or CAF or whoever they're going by these days is an economy killer. It will help to away with all the environmental improvements that we have seen. It's not just going to hurt the farms. There are hundreds of small businesses here that can't sustain that. They spend money at the grocery store, at restaurants, at gas stations. I help a lot of those people come into compliance and do better business practices. I employ 10 professionals. They are not minimum wage jobs, excuse me, and they all spend their money on their rent or their mortgages here in Trinity, helping those dollars circulate and stay here. I believe it was last year at one of the CEQA meetings, Supervisor Groves, you mentioned that license fees were responsible for about $850,000 that went to the sheriff's office to support the enforcement of illegal cultivators. That will go away. If all of these numbers were real, that the other one is proposing, great, but they're not, the margins don't exist there. We need an alternative tax that is sustainable, and so I ask for your support in putting this on the ballot. Thank you.
All right, Patrick Collins from Sawyer. I just wanted to come and get my license. Thank you, Trinity County. I picked up my license today. I feel blessed to be able to have a job right now, you know, and I feel a great sense of responsibility to the community in keeping you all safe, so I wasn't sure that I was actually going to come in here and talk today. I thought I would try to share it through other means. But here I am, I made it in, getting the license and all that, so I just want to say thank you to the community for keeping everyone safe, and I want to let you know that the cannabis community, at least myself, speaking for myself, take it, take great pride and seriousness in being able to have a job at this time. And so, being able to lean into the future and look at taxes, I just really also take great pride in the fact that the cannabis community has stepped up. I can look around and look in the eyes of the people who said, "Where are you? Step up." We stepped up. So here we are. What you've asked for, you've asked for more organized representation. That's happening in our cannabis community. You've asked for alternative proposals and representation. I think that when I look around and I look in your guys' faces, I know that you know that that's happened. And so I see great future in this community, and I want to thank you for allowing me to have a cannabis license, where when I started this, I thought that was an impossibility. So please don't disregard us and the things that we collectively put together and that we put forth as a disbanded, now banded group of state-licensed cannabis producers in your area. We thank you, and we want a future. And so please really consider what this, what's before you, and please put real issues to the voters, let them decide. Don't be in the way of the voters by not recognizing that we've shown up for you, by you, as a community, to show you that we're here. So thank you very much for the time to speak, and I hope that you push this matter forward. Thank you.
It's easier if we, if you remove your mask, we can play. If you're comfortable removing.
I'd rather keep it on, just to be safe. I got kids at home, we're trying, we've been so responsible for so long here. Ray Sekel. Hi, I'm Steve, I'm from Junction City. I have two items I'd like to address. One is my continuing and ongoing frustration that there is a group of folks who have been involved in this process since the first planning commission, who have negotiated in good faith, who have stuck by the rules, who have, even the rules we don't like, even the rules that are very expensive and very tough. We haven't fought back, we haven't sued, we haven't thrown fits, we've tried to work responsibly, reasonably, and step up as part of this community. And there are other folks in this community who continue to negotiate in bad faith, and it's very frustrating when we, as a cannabis community, really spend time and effort and money and energy and try to come up with reasonable alternatives, reasonable negotiations, and we realize that we're negotiating with some folks who are just going to turn around and sue or throw out a tax proposal that's out there right now that would basically just shut the industry down. It's preposterous. If you cannot see that the CAF TAA proposal is an industry killer, then either you're not reading it, or you have a bad interpretation, or I don't know. Secondly, is the current proposal from the TCAA is a reasonable proposal. I ask that none of you make a decision whether it's a good proposal or not. The decision should be, can't go to the voters. We're in the middle of a, what, thousand-year pandemic right now, can't go anywhere. Gathering signatures is dangerous. Gathering signatures is going to be difficult. I certainly don't want to go out anywhere. I try to stay home, I have some immunocompromised family members, and we try to keep it very tight and in our circle. So I'm asking you to let the people decide. Send it to the ballot, let the people vote. We, as a cannabis community, is it crazy that we actually want to see a tax? What industry is like, hey, here's a reasonable tax proposal, guys? We're trying to do it equitable, we're trying to do it fairly. Give us a chance to get it before the voters, let the people of Trinity County decide what's best on this tax proposal, and continue to please work with us in good faith. We try, we mean what we say, we stand by our word, we're a community that keeps coming back, we keep coming to the negotiating table, we keep making compromises, we keep bending over about as much as we can. Give us a shout. Send it to voters, please. Thanks. And I believe I'm the last person. Oh, I was up for that one.
Hello, Dr. Tammy, Douglas City. It's really nice to see you guys. I encourage you to vote yes. Throw all these tax proposals to the wall, the voters, and see what sticks, what the voters want. Trinity needs a sustainable revenue source, one that supports our local and legacy farmers in all cannabis businesses, as well as the businesses the industry supports. I went to a Fourth of July celebration, and it's a 30-year event, and it's all industry people, and we were discussing this by campfire, and on the other proposal, they were saying, oh, we're going to move to Trinity then, because it's play, pay-to-play, plug-and-play. I was like, what? And they go, yeah, well, it's cheaper when you figure it out to do it the other way than to get all your licenses, because you getting caught was part of the deal that you paid, and you only had to pay a fine. And I didn't look at things that way, and I was like, no, no, we're trying to support Trinity. So that wouldn't be such a good way. Move to Trinity, they can't catch everybody, and it's cheaper to pay the fine than to be legal. And that's not what we're trying to do. This encourages the black market and could backfire tremendously, making more illegal growth than we've ever seen. You guys have done too much work on the cannabis program to let it fail, okay? For not these people to exist, but be able to carry on. So I say, please vote yes, just let it get on the ballot, let the people decide. Thank you.
So now we are going to move to our Zoom public comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome, this is Julia Rudnick. It's a terrible name to pronounce, so no worries. And thank you so much for the board, for everyone for sticking around, I'm sure everybody's pretty hangry at this point. So I'm here to ask the board to vote the TCAA tax proposal, the TCAA tax proposal, onto the November ballot. As a TCAA board member, I've been personally involved in the proposal's development from the beginning, and it's strong, fair, and will generate much-needed revenue for our wonderful county. There should be no doubt in anyone's mind that the opposing proposal put forth by the TAA or CAF is an extinction tax designed by a handful of people that don't want licensed cannabis to survive in Trinity County. This is not something everyone in a group wants to happen, but their leadership does. These leaders already know that putting a $30,000 minimum on the county's top license is not something farmers can afford, that compounding a 7% tax across supply chain will wipe out access to markets. It's been a battle for years that we've gotten to end, once we fought to become legal, once we proved we wanted to comply with the county and state regulations, and once we were openly, once we were able to openly defend our environment and join our community. But it hasn't ended, and their extinction tax is yet another attempted nail in the coffin. I also want to be perfectly clear that the TAA did not include industry input. They worked with one cultivator, who I understand ended up disagreeing with their end results, and it had a couple of opposite vocal calls with another. That is not industry input, nor is it anonymous cooperation that everyone claims they want. The proposal I'm advocating for today took longer to write, followed the primaries, because we took the time to truly get industry input. It was written by industry experts and participants, it was vetted by one of the state's top law firms, informed by industry associations across the state, and circulated for the input of a full TCAA membership a number of times. The tax put forward today is the only tax that can honestly call itself industry-informed. I'm also proud to point out that the industry-informed tax proposal was informed and inspired by every board supervisor present today, not just one supervisor, so Bobby already corrected that deceptive misinformation propagated by the TAA. It was informed and inspired by the conversations, actions, advice, and even the measures put forward in the past by each and every one of you, and I'm grateful to all of you for your passion and ongoing guidance and support. So really, I'm imploring that you put the TCAA proposal on the ballot, so the licensed community and those who support the benefits we provide to our economy and community can finally advocate for a proposal that we believe in, not just argue against one whose intentions are questionable. We are eager to discuss how we can contribute with a tax that is sustainable and not punitive. We put the time and effort into what we presented today, which isn't easy when we work seven days a week, 12 hours a day. We're not rich, we're not evil, despite what some people say, and we're here today as citizens who want to share what we think is the right thing to do, what we've been asked to do, a solid, sustainable, revenue-generating proposal that cultivators can stand behind. Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom?
Yes.
Veronica Kelly?
Yes, Veronica Kelly.
Hi.
Actually, it'll be David Alby's.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for listening to me. I am David Alby from Douglas City. I applaud the Growers Association for coming up with this tax plan, and I see they put a lot of effort into it. I have a couple of major issues, though, after reading through it, and one of them briefly is paragraph 3.26.230, and I found that how could we support a tax that says no other tax measures can compete? And the last, or the second one, excuse me, is 3.26.10, C1 and 2, basically takes any teeth out of a tax, because there is no qualifying words that say what constitutes disability or circumstances that I wouldn't have to pay the tax. I like a lot of the stuff they did in here, but when you start putting stuff in, and hey, we're going to be taxed, but if we follow this, you're not getting any. And it's easy to get a medical examiner to give you a 10% disability, and you're not to pay tax. I hope you understand my point. And then if supervisors ask this, then they're telling the public that this is the one that they support. Let them go out and get the signatures, just like the other county. I think it's valid enough for them to be able to do it. I'm sitting in the middle here, I don't have a, I think marijuana is a growing industry, and we need to be able to tax them. I don't see them taxing them out of existence either. But with those two provisions that I mentioned, the legality and the, it has no teeth, in other words, so. It's just the limiting factors that state, well, you can't raise taxes, you know, as a supervisor board, you can't go above the maximum, you can't, et cetera. If those words were redone, that would make me a very nice document, but as is, I don't see the legal way that you can support it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, David Alby. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Lisa Wright.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I hear multiple, so I'm going to go with Lisa Wright, because that's who Deputy Clerk Mistina sees waving, so we will get to each and every one of you, please be patient. Lisa Wright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For everyone at the bottom of participants, at the bottom of the screen, you can raise your hand, that's what bump me up there, so sorry, Chris, don't bother to be there. So Lisa Wright, Lewiston, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I was outside for a while, but it did get pretty hot, so came back in to do the Zoom. What I'd like the board to do today is just consider your role in this matter, and that perhaps it's not to determine the efficacy of this proposed tax measure, or any proposed tax measure, but rather it's a willingness to put it to the people for a decision. So, I mean, after all, taxes take the approval of people. of the people, or the public. So why not allow the measures, especially during this pandemic, any measure that's properly formatted, have legal counsel review it for that, be allowed to go on the ballot? Your role is to facilitate the process of measures being placed on the ballot and to help eliminate the risks and danger that can be posed by in-person signature collection. It's really not a way to do this contactless. I did see some people posted about what the other measure outside of the U.S. Post Office, which isn't really appropriate. But, you know, we're in that, but actually, it's very difficult and dangerous. So rather than digging into the details and saying, this is going to be the board's tax measure, maybe you think about your role as the conduit, really, for measures to get on the ballot during this pandemic. Just something to consider. You know, our posted taxes, period. I do support the idea of the cannabis community coming forward with a tax measure that's supported by the particular industry. So I think that gives it strong standing, or should, as being the most, you know, the major industry in our community in terms of economic benefit. There's, you know, the questions around potential fraud, et cetera. I'm asking you to kind of lay that aside and just say, you know what, as the board, we want to give the people the chance to vote on this. Let each side, or how many, or maybe there's another measure out there, make their case and leave it to the voters, because that's really where taxes belong. So thank you for this opportunity, and have a great day, stay safe.
Thank you. Mr. Rob Fixx?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would just like to ask the board supervisors to definitely vote yes to put this on the ballot this fall, to allow the voters to make up the decision of a sustainable form taxation for the cannabis industry. The other proposal is definitely unsustainable for the direction of future and will ultimately take out the industry, which will affect Trinity County community in a negative fashion. And the foresight in that measure is lacking, whereas the foresight in this measure before you to be put up on the ballot has a future that is fair and will also give back to the community. So I agree in this day and age of COVID that it is not feasible to go out and feasible or respectful to people's health to go out and collect signatures. So I hope that the supervisor will vote to put this on the ballot. Thank you very much. You all have a good one.
I know I heard Chris Schaefer was supposed to.
Yeah, she's phoned.
Chris Schaefer?
I am unmuting. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to thank the board of supervisors for all your efforts on cannabis ordinances, both past and present. I also appreciate your consideration of my comments. I have been a participant in our county's commercial cannabis program since the beginning. As farmers, we were invited to give input as well as ask questions as to the ordinances being developed. As a result of that community and public involvement, a framework was developed to address the concerns of many farmers and members of the public. Today, the board is considering whether to allow the proposals submitted by the Trinity County Agricultural Alliance to be placed on the ballot in November. This proposal was developed by individuals in our local industry and has been vetted by industry leaders and cannabis policy experts. The membership of TCAA was included in the development of the proposal. As a small cultivator, I feel that this ordinance is a balanced, fair, and sustainable proposal, which will bring in significant tax revenue to the county as well as allowing the legal cannabis industry in Trinity County to grow in a healthy way with our goals of protecting the environment as well as the other principles of local regulation of cannabis. This proposal is a production-based tier approach to taxation of cannabis product, as well as annual tax on gross sales for each cannabis retail license held by a person living in the county. There is another proposal being circulated for signatures to be placed on the ballot. That proposal has been brought forward by CAF and also endorsed by the board of the TCAA. This proposal could result in the death of the small farmer in our local cannabis industry. It will drive small farmers away from the legal framework and discourage any new small farms from attempting to enter into our legal industry. This proposal also puts a tax on unlicensed cannabis growers based upon plant count. For many farmers, this tax would be considerably less than what we are currently paying in fees, as well as what we would be paying in proposed tax. This just does not make sense to penalize legal farmers who comply with local and state regulations and who farm in a safe and regulated environment, unless, of course, the goal is to destroy the legal cannabis industry in Trinity County. I do believe that all tax proposals should be heard and voted on by the citizens of our county. I believe that the merits of any and all need to be debated. With COVID-19, we are in a precarious time to be out collecting signatures. Therefore, I encourage this board to place any and all cannabis tax proposals on our upcoming ballot. Please consider a no vote on a measure is a vote against licensed cannabis, and I thank you very much for your consideration.
Veronica, want to say something? Veronica, are you waiting to speak?
We have other people.
Yes, yes, I am. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is it my turn?
Yes, Veronica.
Oh. Veronica Kelly Alves, Douglas City. I also wanted to commend TCAA for working so hard to put together a tax to put forth. Having read through, though, I think there are.
You just cut out Veronica.
I'm sorry?
You're cutting out.
Can you hear me? Um, is this better?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Let me turn left. There are some, you know, concerns there that don't make it as strong as I think it could be for those that are not in the industry. I think a good tax is something that is fair to the industry as well as something that the non-industry can support. And I think there's a few things in here that don't present that. Because I, you know, with the last tax too, you know, that people complained about no input, that I'd like to know what non-industry groups were a part of creating this. And the hardship waiver, I think Dave said it earlier, doesn't have enough detail in it. Is there a hardship waiver for wine? Because they were using that as an example earlier. But the plan presented feels a little watered down. It doesn't have the meat that I think would make it sustainable for the growers as well as supported by non-industry. So I would encourage maybe a retool, maybe look at some of those things that are of concern and bring it back. But that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm showing Carla Avila.
Carla from Hyunpong?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Carla.
Hi, this is Carla Avila from Hyunpong. Thank you so much for taking the time today for this. And I first want to quickly address the hardship clause in the TCAA tax. There's something about it that really is difficult to explain when you're not involved in the industry, and that is that there's something beneath our industry that doesn't even occur in wine, although it probably did right up in prohibition, I would imagine. But we're in a situation where once our product goes up the supply chain, and the only way that that can happen is through metric, once it, only the farm with the metric manifest, it's all in the database, it has to be entered within 48 hours. It's very heavily regulated. As soon as it goes up the supply chain, the farmer loses control over what happens to the product at that point. And it's part of the regulatory system that the state designed, where we have to wait then for payment because the product has to be tested, which happens at distribution, before it is officially able to be into the marketplace, because it has to test clean first by law. And so once it has its certificate of approval for its testing, for its lab tests, then it actually moves from distribution to sale. And so we are not getting paid immediately upon the crop leaving farm. And in many cases, we've had experiences where hundreds of farmers in the last year were not paid back by distribution for months and months and months. And, I mean, devastating effects for our family, we, well.
You're cutting out, Carla.
And my only point.
You're cutting out a little bit.
So, okay, sorry, I, yeah, Hyunpong Wi-Fi. So I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
The reason for the hardship clause is to protect farms in the event that they have not actually been paid any income from which to pay the tax. And in our case, we're living on about $23,000 a year right now. We have a 2,000-square-foot canopy that we're hoping to expand to our full license type if we can ever get out of these kinds of regulations enough to actually see our farm thrive. But what we want to see is a tax that's sustainable for the long term. And I don't think that this tax is watered down at all. What we did is we looked at every other agricultural commodity across many different industries. We looked at how small businesses and medium-sized businesses are taxed across many different industries. And the reason that the public is just now starting to see this tax is because we are just now getting to the point where we have done enough research, really well vetted research, to come up with a tax that we feel is going to be sustainable and is going to be successful. I understand that there is inflation over years, but I would say that in a commodity market, and this is, again, there are many taxes on the books that hold precedent for this in all other farms. And the fact is that commodities are going to keep going down and down and down in price. And so inflation and commodities don't always go in parallel. It is the privilege of the board of supervisors, what can this tax is passed by the voters to be able to address those types of issues. The other thing that I want to comment on is that.
Carla, I'm sorry.
Is the only reason that you're.
Am I out of time?
You're out of time, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you.
Chair Chadwick, can you please tell the folks waiting on the phone how they raise their hand to offer comment?
Oh, on the phone?
Yeah, I think it's unclear how they would queue up to offer comment.
When we're done with Zoom and we go to public comment on phone only, we will take a list of members or people from the public waiting, and then I will call the roll call. That's how I've done it in the past.
We have Eric DeRoche next.
Eric DeRoche?
Hello, can you hear me?
Right now, we can.
Well, thank you very much for letting me speak. My name is Eric DeRoche. I own and operate Trinity's Farm here in Peru, California, licensed cultivator. I would like to speak in support of the TCAA's tax initiative and my support of it in hopes of that allowing it to get on the ballot so that the members and community members of Trinity County can make that decision, if this is a tax that will work for us. But as a small cultivator, I find that this tax is fair and that it will allow me to operate in the future while giving back to my community, where I want to be giving back to my community. I want to get money into our community to make our place better. And this is a way of being able to do that and still having a livelihood. The other thing I wanted to speak about was the hardships of farmers not being paid. I am still awaiting payment for crops from 2018. That is a real thing. I mean, there is nothing I can do other than hire a lawyer and lose that money to the lawyer, essentially. So that's all I need to say. And please support this tax and allow it on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, there's Jeff Gilholy. I can't hear.
Hello?
Jeff, with a name we can't pronounce, the last name, I apologize. Jeff? Jeff?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Jeff Godella from Zonia. I'm one of the first licensed cultivators in the county. I was an early adopter of this program. I'm also a founding member of the TCAA. And when we started that group last year, creating a tax was one of the main things that we talked about. We had a couple of things we wanted to do, and I think that was certainly one of them. And we've been basically working on it since then. It's not a last-minute thing. A lot of work went into this measure, a lot of input. And as I'm sure you guys are aware, getting a bunch of independent growers, not only to join our group, but also agree on a tax is a difficult thing. And we still that we need a tax that is sustainable. And this tax is sustainable. And I would implore you guys, the board, to allow the voters to make the choice between a sustainable tax that will sustain this industry and sustain a tax base and a revenue for the county.
You cut out Jeff.
Sorry, I don't know what I can do.
Okay, get back.
Allow the voters to decide. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
To decide on the ballot whether they want a sustainable tax or they want the industry to end. That's basically all I have to say. I don't know if you guys can hear me or not.
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Eric DeRoche? No, Jeff.
Eric?
Maybe he didn't undo his hand.
Wait, hold on.
Okay, Rosanna. Rosanna.
Roseanne? Rosanna?
Hi.
Roseanne?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can, thank you.
Hi, I'm Roseanna Garrett. I am a licensed cultivator in Aetor. I would very much like to encourage the board to allow this tax proposal to be placed on the November election. You know, I can't say that I'm, personally, I don't love paying taxes, but I would love to be able to support Trinity County and Trinity County programs in a way that makes sense, that is financially sustainable. I know that we're here to talk about the TCAA tax plan and about the CAF tax plan, but the CAF tax plan is too much. I think that would put a lot of people out of business and put a lot of strain on people who are already strained. A TCAA plan would allow for smaller businesses to thrive and allow for more sustainable, I don't know, tax contribution, allow for more sustainable growth in cannabis industry in Trinity County. So that's, basically, I'd just, I'd like to encourage you to vote yes and allow this to develop in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
Walter Wood?
Walter Wood?
Hello, I hope you can hear me. I know our internet is not great. My name is Walter Wood. I'm owner of Soul Square Farm in Trinity County. Except for taxes do same liquor stores pay. For grape growers, for other industries, I know, like, for example, logging gets some pretty huge tax breaks to operate. I know a nearby, very usable, built on 640 acres on the river, Zone TPZ, they pay $400 a year for property taxes, about 62 and a half cents an acre. Very close guy, not on the river, not usable. I paid over $100 for an acre. We also pay $6,000 a year for a cannabis license already, plus the state license, taxes, taxes, and more taxes. After all that, we are treated as non-contributors. We, as members of the TCAA, are proposing to fund Trinity County We, as members of the TCAA, are proposing to fund Trinity County even more than we already are in a way that no other industry does. This proposal will allow most of these legal farms here to survive. As a farm with our own brand, we do not get paid for our product until a retailer pays for our product. At this point, we've been paid for probably 30 to 40% of our 2019 harvest and maybe 60 to 80% of our 2018. I don't have the numbers in front of me, they're too depressing to stare at. This other proposal would straight kill the legal industry here, at least as far as we are concerned. We would not be able to survive an additional tax of a minimum of $30,000 more dollars. We would almost certainly be moving from Trinity.
You're cutting out.
Continue our plans, build struggles and roughness. We would just be out of luck. I'll go here, regret, and follow the head text, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Nam Tran.
Mr. Nam, I think it's Naung Tran, he called him last. Mr. Naung.
I'm running with the Good Sellers Group, we're a distribution, Southern California. Who's been working with a bunch of Trinity County small farmers. We found a customer base forum that appreciates the small farms. And looking over the TAA tax proposals, I feel like it's just going to kill off the industry for Trinity. A 7% proposed tax will basically not allow me to work with any farmers from Trinity. And I think the tax proposal from the TCAA is very reasonable, where it allows the farmers to be successful still. And in order for me to be successful, I need the farmers to be successful. We need a tax proposal that's fair and reasonable and keep in mind that we need successful farmers to have a successful industry to be able to tax for a long time. If we put the TC, TAA tax proposal in, I feel it will kill the industry. We won't have any farmers to tax. I won't have any farmers to work with. And it will really suck because I've come to really love the Trinity farmers up there. They're great people and I would love to continue working with them and making sure they are, found the right distributor. We need to send the, the TCAA tax proposal to ballot. I know there cannot go out and get the signatures right now, but it is the most fair, reasonable tax proposal out there. It's done from the growers, from input from actual industry people. And it needs to be on the ballot and for people to be able to vote. The TAA one is just really unreasonable. And that's all I have to say. I just really want to see the farmer successful from Trinity and I feel like the other tax proposal is not going to help. And the TAA one is not helping at all. And the TCAA one is helping. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Terry, did you have something you wanted to contribute?
I would, I'd like, just a concern and maybe they can maybe clarify this, but as a taxpayer, I thought I would like to kind of point this out. So in any other business, I am in support of some sort of initiative points in ballot, but one of the concerns that I have is that, you know, we, as a community member, we have a free for all. People come here because they don't have to pay taxes and all of that. But one concern I have that, I apologize, I didn't get to read it in its entirety before I came to the meeting today. But in no other business do you not have to pay tax, that I'm aware of, that you don't have to pay taxes for until you receive payment for those goods. So that unless you're talking about self-tax. So that's a concern that I have, that I just thought that, you know, before we make a vote, that would be something that would potentially cause us issues down the line.
I appreciate that.
So it's on page 10.
Thank you.
Chair, I think that's one of the else.
We're still are in public comment, but.
Brian Gossman?
Brian Gossman?
Hey, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Yeah, I'm here as a TCAA founding member and a license holder with Mountain Cannabis Company in Hayford. You know, one thing that, that was brought up earlier was why this is all of a sudden coming to the table. And, you know, we have spent a very long time, Carla had brought it up, you know, piecing this together. This was something that we wanted to be a contribution to this community. You know, we, this, this was not meant to divide or polarize anyone in this community in any way. The Board of Supervisors has been asking, you know, the license holders and, and people in the community to bring something to you guys for years now. And this is it. You know, it might not be as completely shined as it might need to be for some folks, but we have some time to do that. It definitely needs to go before the people, all of these need to go before the people, everyone's measure. So that it can get properly treated with an even hand. Why the CAF and TAA measure, you know, is obviously meant to bolster the fund in an immediate sense and then just watch the cannabis ship sink, which is exactly what it would do. Doesn't make too much sense to me. You guys on the Board of Supervisors know, definitely know better than the folks on TAA or CAF, what this industry needs. You would have heard it from all sides, you are definitely more informed than the people who are the naysayers in this. So that, you know, I ask that absolutely put this in front of people, you know, take special interest groups. You know, ta- take them out of this, it just doesn't make any sense. But put everyone's measure that, you know, they've spent time on in front and let the community decide. Let's do something positive. There's so much negativity going on in the world right now. And, and as the gentleman who did the presentation for this, you know, we have the chance to make a tangible milestone in this whole legality of cannabis in Trinity County. And batter up, bring them on and, and let's, let's take a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
You good?
The next one we have on the list is Audrey Tarbo.
Audrey Tarbo? Audrey?
Hi, just learning Zoom, but thanks supervisors for all your tireless work. First and foremost. Okay, I want to say that first and foremost, and there are two in addition to that, I'm also a licensed cultivator, an active community member and volunteer. I'm here to say that I do want to be taxed. I want to support our county. However, I want to be taxed in a fair and sustainable way so that we can continue to thrive as a county and that I can, uh, continue to live in this county and raise my family. I'm asking you all to support the family farm by supporting this fair TCAA tax bill that was created by folks in this industry. I want to see this tax bill on the November ballot, but please, oh, put us at risk by making us go out to collect signatures. Let's let the people decide. Thank you.
And one just says Mike.
Mike? Mike?
Yes, I'm here. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for making it possible for me to address this meeting online during this pandemic. And I'm a full-time resident of Trinity County. I believe that the cannabis tax proposal brought forward here by Trinity County Agriculture Alliance is the best and fairest way to tax the cannabis industry in this county. The Trinity County Agriculture Alliance tax proposal will benefit and enrich the county and provide a fair and balanced way for licensed cannabis producers to go forward and stay in the business platform. Thank you for hearing me on this important conversation.
Mike, hold on one second, we're going to pause your time. We're going to pause your time. There's someone with an open mic on, can you, if you're not mic, please mute yourself. How much time does it say? You have two minutes and eight seconds left, Mike, please continue.
Should I just go over or?
No, no, you were fine, you were fine. We heard most of it, just at the very, the last few words, somebody's mic was open and we, we had a double track. If you want to start the sentence over that.
I just want to thank the, the board and the county for hearing me on this important issue. I look forward to seeing this tax proposal, the tax proposal put forward by Trinity County Agriculture Alliance on the November ballot so that all of us, all members of the community can have our vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, sorry about that.
That's the last one I showed with hand.
So that's the last one on Zoom. And so now we're going to go to the telephone lines for those of you without internet. And what we're going to do first is ask for just a roll call of names and then I will come back to you and that's when you will present. So if you're on the public comment for item 5.1 on the telephone, please state your name.
Larry Winters was trying to get on, but he asked if he could type it.
Larry Winters, if you would like to type it out and, and send it to Tina real quick, I have a, a letter by somebody else that could not. So go ahead and do that. I will be brief. This is from Pat and Linda McCaslin, Dancing Turtle Garden in Hyam Palm, known as Butter Creek. To the Trinity County Board of Supervisors, I am writing to convey to you how I feel about the Trinity County Agricultural Alliance tax proposal. I feel that this is a proposal that was put together by the very people that this ordinance was designed to include. Let the public process take place and allow the measure to be placed on the November ballot and let the voters decide. The voter, the Board of Supervisors has worked long and hard to draft a licensing program that looks out for the long-term interest of all of Trinity County, a program that protects the lands and the waters of our county. Judy Morris and Keith Grove spent many hours, days, weeks, months, years, working out so many details that will make our county a place that the legal cannabis industry can exist as a viable local business, a place where we can remove a large portion of the illegal cannabis grows. We voted, I'm sorry, something just came up. We voted on Measure A and it was defeated because it was put together by a small special interest group that did not allow the very industry that proposed to tax any input. It excluded the people with direct experience with the very data of fair tax proposal needs to bring long-term sustainable revenue to the county's general fund. It is my belief that TA, the TAA measure is designed to destroy the legal cannabis industry through extremely high taxes on ancillary business that do not, that do any business in Trinity County. We need to have both tax proposals heard publicly so the items can be agendaized. It is counterproductive to revert back to a system that is based on income generated by a fine and a fine-based system with little or no oversight by government agencies that are in place to protect our environment and the peoples of Trinity County. In future interactions, we can discuss a fine that will make the illegal growers stop in their tracks and move on. Now what is nothing, not what is now nothing more than a slap on the wrist and to them a cost of doing business. It is time now to take the step, next step, to allow TCAA tax proposal to be put on the November ballot and let the voters decide. As our supervisors, by voting, by you voting no, you are voting against the licensed cannabis. We are a small cottage garden and do not want to be a big operation. Is like a small winery that only produces one or two varieties of wine. Some of the best cannabis in the world is grown in our county. Please let Trinity County showcase legal product that will generate long-term revenue to the county's general fund. Sincerely, Pat and Linda. I don't know if Mr., was it Winter?
It was Mr. Winters, he was trying to get on, or he didn't have a mic that he was asked if he could type it in, but I don't see it.
Hello, this is Cindy Winter.
Hi Cindy. We're getting a little feedback, if you, if you could turn the volume that you hear us on down while you're speaking, it'd be much appreciated.
Okay. I have a quick comment. Thank you supervisors and county representatives for allowing a cannabis industry to make it this far. I'm Cindy Winter, a small cotton farmer, support TCAA tax initiative. Please respect the permitted growers and don't allow the TAA to produce their industry-calling proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on the telephone lines for public comment? During then, I'm going to bring it back to the board and there's two points of clarification I wanted to just speak to you real quick. The first one was, this is the only citizen ballot initiative that was brought to me. I know of no others, I did not play favorites. That was the first thing. The second thing, just as a mass communication went out with my name on it saying that this was my measure, there were things spoken of. We on this side of the diets are used to gossip and we're used to being the point of incorrect fake news, miscommunication, lies, and defamation. And so it is not surprising that once again, we, besides the mass mailing. So clarifying those, I apologize to the board and to those in attendance for the misguided that was said previously. With that, I bring it back to the board.
I understand supervisor, because last night I was having to defend the fact that I'm a grower that is facing land to grow.
Yes, I believe that we all have endured, as Richard could, I hope Tina you haven't. And I know that each and every one of us has been, you know, they, they, the public forgets that we're human. I'll leave it at that.
They don't care. Get real.
Some do.
They make it up to run with it.
But at, at, not being said, I bring it back to the board and would entertain a motion.
I just would like to make a comment for starters and that will warm all you guys up. You know, sitting here listening to all the comments, I'm reminded of, many of you are still in this process that started with the county five years ago, for sure six years ago, obtaining your license, going to meeting after meeting, including planning commission meetings. And what I was reminded of, of many of you who were in the group, meeting after meeting, say please tax us. And certainly I'm sure Supervisor Rose has not forgot that. We actually, in our much beat up ad hoc that we were in, had a tax measure to bring forward to the board in '17. Supervisor Finley though stepped in and wanted to create a tax measure and we're like, great, help us out, you can do some work. And so I certainly am one, I can see this whole board wanting to have a tax measure. I've heard a couple comments about bringing both tax measures forward. In the era of COVID, we heard a few points of not safe to collect signatures. We certainly, even those, even if there's division, we certainly want to see any harm to any of our community members. So although it is not on our agenda, at very least, if I could add or change a few things to this measure, I would. But at the very least, I think the board, so we can get on with business, look at putting the measures on in November. And then all of you on either opponents of each measure will have to make your case to the public. And that is just my. each measure will have to make your case to the public. And that is just my thoughts on the issue, but we can't put the other measure on.
She is almost out of like a motion.
Well, it would, but the other one's not on the agenda, so I don't know how we can do that.
It's my understanding. Yeah, my understanding is the last day to bring it forward to the Board is August 7?
It's the first meeting of August 7.
The first meeting, oh, it's August 4.
August 4.
So, so they would have to go through a Board of Supervisors and.
And your next meeting.
Yeah, so this was the only citizen group that has brought anything forward, and it was brought forward to me, and just in time to make the agenda on Tuesday.
Well, just think, if TAA brings theirs forward to you, what kind of a PS you're going to get from the public?
Yeah, well, I'll probably be told that. Anyway, besides that, I don't know if you want to address, or if your lawyer would want to address the concerns that Mr. Alby's brought up, and I don't know, I think I wrote them down correctly, but I'm sure your lawyer did. His, it was partially addressed in the hardship. So the hardship, my understanding is when a farmer whose home is on his property as well, so it's his residence slash farm, when he cannot pay the tax, that there's a pathway to be able to come square up later. Do you want to address that? Because I think that it was missspoken earlier.
Yeah, the other presenters could take this on, or the staff.
Or your lawyer might want to. I don't know.
True. Lauren, if you're still listening, this is John. I'm stepping up to the mic to answer this one, but please weigh in if you feel you can add to it. Dave Alby has brought up a good point, and it's on page seven of our proposal, item E, and I'll read it to you. Should there be any special circumstance preventing a person from paying the full amount of tax owed, the person shall present information regarding these circumstances to the tax collector, who shall make a determination as to the merits of the claim, and who may, in their discretion, grant temporary relief in the form of a deferral or other adjustment. So, for instance, Carla Adler, who's, and others that have had a very hard time getting paid from distributors, going all the way back to 2018 harvest, much of that still hasn't actually been paid for by distributor yet. So there is no, they have not achieved that income to pay their tax. And so, and another example might be the Helena fire of three years ago, where if somebody, say, got their payment from a distributor burned in the fire, and those $20 bills don't exist anymore, they might appeal to the tax collector for a temporary deferral of that payment. So it's not waiving the payment or exempting that assessment. It's merely deferring it to the next billing, the tax billing cycle, and giving them time to hopefully contribute their fair share in a way that doesn't crush them.
So thanks for clarifying. And the second one was 3.2.6.
Excuse me, can you hear me? This is Lauren. This is my attorney. I'm having some technical issues here, but I am here to also respond to that.
Yes, please.
And that is, yes, the idea here was just to provide some flexibility. In the event that there was some extenuating circumstance that an operator needs a little more time to pay. I think, you know, in the age of coronavirus and a certain economic situation, not to mention the fact that cultivators don't often are not paid until much later, it's not hard to think of the situation where this might come up. And, you know, the language does put it in the tax collector's discretion. And, you know, if there's, I think the concern has to be with this being too loose in terms of what the information needs to be provided. That's because the situations might differ. So, you know, I think we might be open to maybe making some tweaks to the language there if it makes those happy, but still the idea is that the situations might vary, and it's still in the tax collector's discretion, you know, to determine whether or not it's going to underclaim or whether or not the evidence provided is sufficient to grant them a deferral or some other adjustment as the tax collector may dispute. So, you know, I do think there's enough flexibility there in the county's favor to account for the fact that it's a bit open-ended due to the fact that the situations may vary. And then I know, I think there was another concern raised about the provision that says that there's another measure on the ballot about the same topics, and the other one is disqualified. And that, you know, if that's something that needs to be taken out, I think whatever measure it should, gets most of those should prevail. That is essentially the intent of that provision. And so if there are the technical fix that at least you make to the language there, so that it's compliant, that is, you know, we're meddled with that. But the control was the idea that if there's two continuing edits on the ballot about the same topic, whichever one, you know, gets the most votes, is going to be the one that prevails, the intent there. And I think there might be some other places throughout the ordinance where there might be like minor technical fixes or things that will not impact the overall substance of the measure, but that are just technical edits. And that's also something, you know, that we'd be willing to make, and I'm happy to work with County Council on things like that. And so, thank you.
And the one question that Ms. Terry had.
Oh, yeah, please, Terry, go ahead.
Can you clarify on that, that they don't have to pay the tax until they receive funds? Because that would be a complete utter nightmare for accounting purposes.
I think that's one of the things we'd be willing to adjust. And I met over the weekend with John Letton, who had a good idea to adjust this item E. He thought it would be a little more robust if it were the Board of Supervisors that could grant a temporary deferral with a recommendation from the Ag Commissioner, and therefore put a little more teeth in it, but also provide flexibility when needed. But Terry, I mean, this really, you know, largely fall in your lap, so we're very curious your thoughts on it. I think we'd be willing to adjust a point.
You know, it's not typical that we grant, I mean, right now, there's been some changes, maybe as far as addressing like COVID situation, or if there was a true, I mean, in agricultural world, it's just like business. I mean, unfortunately, sometimes it doesn't always work out. You have to plan for things. But in the case of like a fire, if your entire property burnt down, then that would be a true natural disaster. But just as a general rule for court planning, or for if there's a situation like that, natural disasters and business planning are two totally different things. So that's.
Bobby, are we going into workshop mode?
No, no, we're just trying to get some clarification on the language that is in the ballot before us, because there was.
It is what it is.
There was misrepresentations by the public earlier that I asked to be clarified because it left this idea that it wasn't going to get paid, where it was actually a deferment of payment. So that's two different things. And then Terry in the public. And so I was reclarifying what she had to say to make sure that she had an opportunity to state what she wanted to be heard. So I appreciate that. It is not a workshop. So are there any further questions or comments from the Board to the presenters?
As a drafter of this minister and Supervisor Finley's.
I'm going to have to, I'm addressing the Board right now, and I need to know what they want to do. Thank you.
My statement is that at best, this isn't ready for primetime. We've heard several statements saying, well, we can change that, we can fix that. So there's really nothing to vote on.
Motion to approve as presented.
No amendments?
None. This is it. We can make them later if it's approved by the public in a vote in November.
Is Margaret on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Oh. So kind of.
So you've got a motion. You want to let it die for a second, or what?
All right, I'll second for discussion. So, Lauren, if there was, well, really, the only, the only real question for us is to put on the ballot or not. I mean, I think there's some tweaks I would like to see, but then that certainly would put us into the next board meeting. Is that true? I mean, going off of Keith, Supervisor Rose's question, not ready for primetime?
If the Board is requesting changes to be made, they need to be made before it gets put on the ballot, which means you would have to do that at another meeting. So what that would mean was that you would have to continue it over to a regular scheduled meeting or a special meeting.
I see. And what is the, will the temperature of the Board to, I would assume we'd get a request to put the other measure on the ballot. That would have to come at the next meeting, I assume.
Yeah, but that's not this. So right now, we have a measure to approve as is, and a second. So I would need a subsequent or withdraw if you wanted them to bring it back at the next measure, having met with County Council and pressure with whatever corrections they, the two of them feel. So I, we either need to, a subsequent or withdraw or a vote.
So Keith, does that answer your questions and your primetime comment, or?
Well, several of their answers, well, were, we can fix that, we can change that. Well.
So it is today as is?
No, it's today, we can't.
Right.
So we either vote thumbs up or thumbs down today.
Or continue.
Subsequent to tomorrow, until next week, or next, two weeks, not tomorrow, it's two weeks.
So we're in discussion, can I ask Council a question?
Margaret?
You can ask me a question, yes.
Can I just close my Zoom on people? Margaret, so if one of the Supervisors is found unable to have voted on this at a later date, what would happen to the measure?
Generally, if a Board member is found to be not qualified to vote on an item, the item would have to, would be considered void, and it would either have to come back to the Board for reconsideration, or it would be, if it was an item such as this, it would be removed from consideration.
So what would that, what would that, what would that look like a year after adoption of the tax?
The tax would likely be found void, although there are many years of legal battles before we got to that point.
So possibly we would have to pay the tax back and all that sort of nonsense? After a legal battle?
No, that is correct.
Thank you.
Been our issue.
Call for the question. Unless you can convince somebody else to go a subsequent, we can sit here waiting for that.
Are we done with discussion?
I think so. Keith, I think we're done.
I don't know if that's where we're at.
Or continue. Wow, I'm glad we've got our chairs sitting out there.
Then I, then I'll move to continue to the next week.
Or next board meeting, I'm sorry.
Not tomorrow, but to next regular scheduled. I'll second.
Supervisor Chow, supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Grove?
No.
Supervisor Finley?
No.
Supervisor Morris?
Whatever, can you?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
To approve as presented.
Okay. Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
No.
Supervisor Grove?
No.
Supervisor Chow?
Yes.
So gentlemen, that means you'll have to go to petition. You'll have to endure COVID.
Thank you. We will. We're sincere about this, and we will continue our efforts.
We're going to move on to item five, I believe, 5.5? Oh, 5.4, excuse me. Pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.410, parentheses, they authorize higher end cannabis number 2948238 as a social worker supervisor one. Oh, that's 5.4, sorry. It is 5.5. Sorry, I didn't cross out the right one. 5.5, Transportation adopted resolution which approved the fiscal year 2020-2021 list of project work plans for funding from the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act, RNRA, no impact to the general fund. Thank you for being so patient.
And thank you for the good job at the door.
Yeah.
That's the hardest work I've seen you do in a lot.
He's the door manager.
Oh.
King keeper there.
Thank you.
On my stomach.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah, I'll go through this. Wait a minute, first, Jeremy.
Please, please have Jeremy re-enter the room.
Yeah, by the way, I threw you out, Jeremy.
Such a long time.
You want my wife to test me? Do you want to have lunch?
Mike's sitting in the car.
Yes, Mike gave up 10 minutes for that. I'll be with him.
We don't know this girl.
He's not out there. Maybe he forgot. Do you mind texting him?
I just do. I want to go wash my hands.
There's a disinfectant in the bag.
Yeah, that's not good for touching my face. Thank you.
That actually comes off. I'm going to give you the metal.
Chairman, I've got about 30 minutes left on this tape, so hopefully you can get done at that time.
I'll try. Thank you. Did someone order pizza?
I told you. Wait, that's what he's doing.
Thank you. You guys are round. Welcome back.
I didn't eat while I was gone.
Chicken sandwich.
I was in the hallway.
We moved on to item 5.5, and I already read it. Do I apologize?
No.
Do you rewrite? Do you need it?
Oh, no, I'll start.
Okay, Mr. Tippett, you have your supervisor's attention?
Okay, as you all know, back in 2017, FD1 was passed, which created a new gas tax. That was dedicated to road maintenance and rehabilitation. And so we have a count that this money goes into, right now, it was about $1.7 million, and it increases a little bit every year. But in order to spend. Uh, but, uh, uh, in order to spend the money out of that, I have to have an approved list of projects that I bring to you every year, uh, which, um, we had, when the program initially was established, uh, we set up that, the first, first priority for that money was go to pay for roads that were damaged by storms, or fire, and things like that. And then, second was matching funds, uh, to match federal grants or some, uh, other, uh, state programs such as the highway safety improvement program, the highway bridge program. And the third priority, uh, when money was left over, was, uh, to apply it towards the, uh, pavement management system that we maintain in the department. And of that, 70% was supposed to go as programmed, and then 30% was as listed, uh, by staff or by the board. And really what that was meant?
What year was that started?
Uh, 17, first year was really implemented was 18.
Okay.
So, and keep in mind that the first year it was going was only about 300,000, so it wasn't, it really didn't ramp up. Um, you know, to give you the example that, uh, we had a program, uh, said do chipso on numerous roads in Trinity Center, but did not talk about chipso in Mary, which is the main road in Trinity Center. So we felt that, uh, it was the best that we took care of that while we were there too. So we added that program engine that took it for the year. Over time, uh, a lot of the funds, unfortunately, got swept up by storm damage. Uh, and so that was the biggest chunk of what we had used, uh, to lead up to here. And those storm damaged projects are about to get going, uh, pretty soon. But anyways, uh, last.
Hang, hang on there. So this is, uh, from the night seven storm damage, or is this the three-year-old storm, storm damage? So we're talking Canyon Creek, the big one down south?
Yeah, the 17 storms, this is matching funds.
So Carville, or when, when will all those be done?
Um, a lot of them will be done next year. And then more of the FEMA projects, we're trying to still get a lot of those underway. And, uh, those should be, uh, done shortly there.
I would like to see something more definitive than, they'll be done next year. And what about the FEMA projects? Uh, you have to pay for them first, from what I understand.
And you have to pay for both of them first.
Okay.
Fortunately, um, I got the feds on the E R.
Yeah, I, I thanked you for that when you went back and talked to them about that publicly.
I was able to get them to bounce a lot of that money up front.
Or, or when will, when will they, when will, does it run out? When is it not applicable, or how many years?
Well, the E R.
Does it go on forever?
No, it doesn't. And that, that's, was one of the, um, issues that we had up until, uh, recently, was that, uh, there was a lot of, uh, county priorities that got in the way of getting a lot of this done. And so we were focused, you know, I both, me and my environmental guy were focused on those other priorities.
Getting the I R done.
Yeah, and so.
Instead of keeping the roads updated, which is one of our most incredible assets.
Rick, please continue with your presentation.
Um, so anyways, last year, the R N R A, uh, distribution was 1.77, uh, million dollars. And, uh, now they're telling us to expect to be able to run, uh, 0.712 million because of the COVID, which reduces about $60,000. And that was because gas tax purchases dropped way off in April, as we all know. I did include attachment to show them what the kind of prediction was, but it's a, it's a dip in the road. It's a one-time-only thing, which is, hopefully, one-time-only, which is good news. But it's expected to come back up, but there is, there is a deduction from last year and a deduction taken from this year, uh, to make sure that we have the COVID already accounted for, we don't afford to not have enough money, it's definitely to be done. Anyways, I did include, uh.
Excuse me, one moment.
Has the state increased the gas tax at all?
Uh, the gas tax increases by, uh, consumer.
Right, and it's gone up 3% so far?
Yeah, it was, uh, just a couple of weeks ago.
It's not a static item like they had before, so we will work you back into, eventually into full.
Um, the, because of the way it's distributed, um, even with the, uh, uh, the cost of living adjustment, we get a little bit better off every year. Um, we are right now, have about half of what we need for, to have, to keep the roads the way they are now. But at least we have, we have funds to allow us to go out and do maintenance. A couple of years back, we only had 3,000, 300,000 dollars in 19, or 2017, to do maintenance. So it was, we were, it was slim pickings. I mean, we were down to 13 people and, uh, quite a bit of, uh, effort to try to keep things going. Now we've been able to bring in, uh, some staff and get things going again that we had in some of the older programs, uh, such as a thousand dollars for a thousand, uh, tons of asphalt per yard. And, uh, they went out and they placed that on the roads and they have done chipso. As a matter of fact, um, I did an atta, excuse me, an attachment one, show what the last, uh, three years' allocations were. And as you can see, a lot of them are done, uh, already. But the, probably the big one is the storm damage, um, the design, including High and Palm Road, are, are, um, they're not all the way done, but they're 70% about a month and a half ago. And what we had to do is we had to go out and get some right-of-way at select locations like Highway 36, where, um, uh, Mag River Road slipped down into there, and then, uh, High and Palm Road, we needed a larger easement because it was in the neighbors.
And even though this happened a few years ago, you're just now going out and doing this?
Well, yeah, because.
Even though you didn't have money, you still put big and careful inside this?
No, I, you can't, because the environmental documentation requires a clear environmental, uh, before you acquire right-of-way. But also, we didn't have the full footprint of what we were gonna be doing, because, uh, the geotech engineer needed to go out and analyze the site, and they didn't get out there till about six months ago to do the final.
And you're talking just High and Palm here?
Yeah, but.
Were there any other older damage in, in District 5? High Palm's what, a year and a half?
No, High, yeah, High Palm's about a year and a half, but there's the 2017s.
Seven years old that the river has taken out roads, parts of roads.
Well, that's, that's gonna be.
You're gonna have to try and control me a little better, Bob.
No, I, I, I think, uh, he's entertaining it, so he's allowing it.
Yeah, but this, you have to understand, this stuff doesn't, doesn't happen overnight. We have storm damage, and the first thing I have to do is I have to spend a year explaining to FEMA why, what is damaged, is damaged. And then I have to wait for them to come back on estimates. I'm still waiting for the storms of 2019 to get estimates back that say, oh, we had that damage out there.
Older damage than that.
On High, yeah, this is 2017.
But this is great that you're explaining that this timeframe is outside of your jurisdiction. I think it helps the people understand that you're not in control of the FEMA timetable, so.
Some, some is, some isn't. Um, the, the, and I'll get to that here in a minute. But what I'm talking about is design in general, because first, you have to do the environmental clearance of that project. And that usually takes about a year to get the studies done, and get the things necessary that you need to do to get the project going. And then, in the interim, we're still doing design, and that also can take a year to get it done, uh, especially if you have, which, we don't have the staff to really get things done right now, so I have to go to consultants, and that's always a struggle. Well, we're fortunate on all the, the E R work, because for the most part, except for four sites, I've been able to get FEMA to agree to do, or not FEMA, F H W A to help us with 12 sites. And so those are the sites that we're kind of wrapping up, getting close to being able to take it out to, to bid. But what hap, has to happen is you go through design, and then they come in and they say, hey, here's some right-of-way that you're gonna need to acquire, you need to go acquire that. Right-of-way takes about six months in itself because of, of the Uniform Act. I mean, you can't just walk out, knock on the door, and say, hey, I want to take, buy some property from you. You have to go through, first of all, you have to notify the owner, you have to give them 30 days to comment, then you have to go through appraisal process, then I come to the board, ask you for, to go out and negotiate, and then we negotiate and sign agreements, and I come back, and we have to go through board action again. All that takes time, it adds up to, to time to get it done. So, right now, I've got, I've got, uh, the flat job, right-of-way's done. The field, the F H W A in 2019 storms, we're working on right-of-way, hopefully, we're gonna have that finished up real soon here. The flat job is designed, the FEMA job is, I would say, 90% plans are gonna show up pretty soon. But that's almost $20 million worth of road projects that are gonna go out on the road pretty soon. And it's just, it, it doesn't happen overnight, as much as I want it to, it doesn't. It takes time to get these things done, and to get them prepared correctly, uh, to get them out. And so that's why, yes, it's frustrating, I have, uh, half a road sitting in the river on Van Duzen. And, but I also.
What, you, that happened?
It happened 2017 storms.
Probably a little bit longer ago, and there's one before that, that you still haven't put up the, uh, barrier on, you just left the concrete barriers there.
That's the, uh, Woods Lake Road.
Right, happened at the same time Keith went out.
Supervisor Morris has a question.
So, could we have a special item just to do a rundown on these emergency projects? Um, I'm hearing bits and pieces, Supervisor Finley, who's had great concern in his district. I know of one around, close to town, um, so are they on this list? They're not really, it's like a, it's a different discussion.
Well, there, there's.
Or are they just embedded in?
FEMA projects, well, let's see, this.
I didn't see them, I guess.
There's the FEMA project on, um, uh, Trinity Alps Road is, uh, two, 2020.
What attachment are you looking at?
Attachment one.
Okay.
So we're gonna be finishing up Trinity Alps Road, and I have the various storm damaged FEMA projects being next summer or the summer after. And that, I'm, I'm trying to get the feds to pick it up and get that done too, so we can get that out the door. But, you know, just because these guys are, are helping us do it, doesn't mean that that in itself means we have no work. That still has to be overseen, we have to go through, we have to comment on it. We're the ones that acquire all the right-of-way, it's a lot of work to get it done. And then plus, we're juggling cash the whole time to make sure that we, uh, don't go into negative cash. And part of the problem with the storm damage was, in 17, was one of the largest feds we've had a long time, like, since the 1990, or 1997 storms, because we had over $17 million in damage during that storm. And again, a lot of it has to be a cash play to get it to work right.
Rick, thank you for your patience, Supervisor Morris has a follow-up question.
So I'm seeing this list that you put in to me, um, only goes through 1920, don't I, I mean?
Yeah, because we're here to make.
So, the other projects that are on the list, I'm assuming are gonna be further down the road?
Well, right now, all the projects that you've approved are on this list.
So, one project I don't see out here, that Supervisor Brown and I have, uh, received many calls the last week due to all, you know, all the stacking of Caltrans projects. One in particular is the J C project, that, um, someone was routing people through Canyon Creek, and we know that, that road is half eaten away within that first mile, causing some great issues with safety, people not knowing that road, blowing by those stop signs. Um, so I think Caltrans took care of that, not routed people that way, um, but where?
Yeah, that's, that's the, uh, various FEMA storm damage, uh, projects on the very last line. And I just don't have it listed.
Okay.
But that's, that's essentially Underwood Mountain.
Okay, good to know.
Canyon Creek, and, um, and, uh, also Denny Road.
Okay, I did, was there a listing of that?
It's not listed.
No, it's not listed, it's not broke down in subcategories. It's listed as a, one item, that represents how many?
Uh, it represents, it represents a collection of different roads.
That's at the bottom of the attachment.
That's why I didn't see it.
And that one, I, I'm, I mentioned earlier, when I've mentioned a couple of times, but that one I am struggling to keep up with.
Which one was that?
Uh, the, getting the FEMA stuff going. And that's one of the reasons why, uh, when federal legislation was coming out, there was a big push from all the agencies to extend this from two years, which was impossible to make, to a six-year program. And it was frustrating because, um, we've had disaster after disaster. I mean, we've had, we had 197, we had 17 storms, then we had a lane of fire, and we had the car fire, and then we had, uh, 19 storms, uh, we had, um, some other event in there. And so, and then we have COVID right now. And so, you know, each one of those takes time away, especially when we had the lane of fire. Uh, that first six months, we were busy on trying to get all the, um, recycle and everything done, so that we could get all the properties cleared. We had to man that, uh, station down there at, uh, over by, uh, Polack's Hardware. So, you know, all these things add up to time, and then throw in a $25 million jail on top of it, it's just real busy. I wish I just had road maintenance, first four years, five years, I'd care.
She just, her concern was she did not see it, she did not realize it was bundled, so thank you.
And also regarding the Canyon Creek conversion, is there any way of having follow-up with Caltrans or the contractor for impacts to the road over the last, whatever month it's been, pre-directing, is it going to amount to have it gone to the small?
I, it would be hard pressed, because usually you have to have a pre and post-project assessment of the road conditions.
A follow-up, okay, follow-up. A follow-up to Supervisor Brown's comment on Canyon Creek, is there anything we can do while that other project on 299 is happening for, to improve safety on that path? These cars are still gonna take it to get around that delay.
It's, it's a struggle, because, um, I, I can't control, there's probably, uh, apps like Waze or different things like that, that route people that way.
Well, no, I'm just saying, like, I'll let, you know, alert people with other signage that there is this big stop where those key rails are.
What I might be able to do is put a one-way road ahead sign in at, uh, at, down at the subdivision in Canyon Creek, and maybe at the bottom of, of the road, or lower road, um, to get people to, to understand that they'll have to go through a one-way section. But I have events, warning signs up for the stop signs, and I have the stop signs themselves.
Yeah, um, but we've, we've heard and seen folks fly through there, so, and, and certainly, I'll, I'll let, as Supervisor Brown's district, but.
Mexico, they just put all the ship rope across the road.
Yeah, we do that in Southern Trinity also.
Ship rope.
Rubble screws.
Yeah.
Oh, we don't even do that?
Slow down.
We have to.
We request, oh, we do have some really good waves in certain areas, but.
You know, again, it's.
Somebody drove slow in the middle of the roads, we can slow down.
It's, it's also, you know, it's, it comes down to, I was down again to 13 people in 2017. And I'm still not up to, and my goal was to get us back up to 21, uh, road crew members, and we're at 19 right now. And it's been a struggle just to get to there, because, first of all, down South County, I, it, it's almost impossible to recruit down there, because half the time, nobody wants to work. And, but we've had some, uh, good recruitments recently, and we got another guy down there recently, but, uh, uh, you know, we have hired a few people, and then immediately they turn around and go off to Caltrans. I can't control that, that's one of my other frustrations that we have.
John, you could be in the D O T drill.
Uh, well, I've done, I've done my time down there, I, I have.
I offer to implement that one.
Yeah.
But we have, again, this, this flat job, I mean, I can't emphasize how much work is going on with what is proposed next year. It's, it's, uh, it's a quite a substantial. It's, it's quite a substantial project, and there's a lot of work that's proposed.
You know, I've heard that for eight years now, and I've heard how important it is to maintain our roads. And it's one, I have a road that FHWA, Federal Highways did a great job on 10 years ago. And it's starting to look like garbage now, and people are hauling their boats to get to the lake. And, you know, good luck, it's good luck in the next set of supervisors.
Okay, it's. I, my comment to that would be.
I don't need a comment, Rick.
Yeah.
It's the same old stuff I've heard for eight years now. And I bought it for the first six.
Anyways, based on the attachment that I have in there, I had a, we went through and created, spent some time on our five-year plan this year, and looking at the roads and kind of the cycles that we could have. Wanted to make sure that one year it didn't say, go out and do this four miles of Trinity Dam Boulevard, and then next year say, go out and do another four miles. So we started to try to lump some of those projects and look at different areas that we'd be doing it. And based on the five-year plan that we've created, we created a 2020 RMRA project selection, which is included in your book, showing the roads that we were going to chip seal. Or either it's going to be a single or a double chip seal. And then there's some that we're going to be doing prep work on to get ready for chip sealing in the next year. Most of them, we tried to hit a lot of the busier roads. We are hitting some maintenance, some residential streets that are local in the area. And we pushed some other residential streets down into the slurry seal part. And so that we could have a little bit more funds to stay on the busier roads. But I have the list attached, and I submit that for approval, and with that, I can answer any questions.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Tippett?
And by the way, we've chip sealed probably in the last month about 10 miles of road, so we're getting there. We've chip sealed about 10 miles of road.
Questions, 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 opening it up to the public, anybody on Zoom, telephone, or in the audience? Bringing it back to the board, this is a resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution is presented.
So what I would like to request, so we can watch this process, is that maybe once a quarter you come up and you show us the roads you're going to do. And then, you know, it says it's going to be done by August of 21. And then, you know, we have the roads that are in the plan, and then have they been accomplished? Like a timeline with accomplishments. Because at least for me personally, I tend to look at these once every year, and I'm kind of figuring out where we're at and we do what we said we're going to do. So I would request that.
Go ahead and pull the other two. Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Grove?
Sure.
Supervisor Friendly?
No.
Supervisor Jones? Aye. So I'm going to reclose session, and Darryl, I apologize, I did not report out, and I know we're. So I'll do that tomorrow during special. Close session, item 6.1, Government Code Section 54954.5, parentheses C, conference with legal counsel, anticipating litigation. Number of cases, one. Close session, item 6.2, Government Code Section 54954.5, parentheses E, Public Employment Evaluation Director of Transportation. Is there any public comment on Zoom, in the audience, or on the phone? Having heard no public comment going into closed session, we will close. And Board, let's take advantage of this break and come back in five minutes for closed session. Did you get that email? I said go for it.